Okay, we will call to order this regular meeting in the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, May 28th, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Calvert?
Here.
Trustee Caudill?
Here.
President Simon-Holland?
Here.
Trustee Kelly?
Here.
Trustee Minneto?
Here.
Vice President Raymond?
Here.
And Clerk Taylor?
I am here.
Our student is not here as of yet. Hopefully she'll be able to join us. We have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would one of our gentlemen from the military lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today? Or both of you can. How about that?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service. Do we have public comment? And before we start public comment, I just want to let folks know that several weeks ago, we had intended to have the SHARE Committee work on this agenda, and it is not on this agenda. It is on the June 4th agenda. So if you're here on that item, we will certainly hear your comments, but we won't be taking action on that item today.
Anisha Beckworth? Beckwith?
I'm sorry, your last name is?
Beckwith.
Beckwith, welcome.
Thank you, members of the Board, for allowing me to speak. It's my first time at a Board meeting ever, so here's to a community member trying to get involved. I'm here today to give somewhat of an emotional plea. We, as parents, need help. I am going to be really direct and candid and transparent. My daughter is a freshman at McQueen High School. She's a 14-year-old. She's a good kid. We have a very supportive, very active family. She was caught smoking marijuana at a house across the street. She's not in trouble. The school made me aware of her presence because this house is apparently has been being monitored for the tremendous amount of traffic from students going across the street from McQueen. The house can be seen from campus. So they've been watching these kids go across to and from. My daughter was actually caught because there's a video around her smoking weed. I'm actually grateful for that video because it brought the concern to my attention. Where it gets a little dicey is when I immediately, the second I saw that video, emailed the school and went up to the school and asked for help. I have to be honest. I get a little, I get compassion, I get understanding, but not many resources. It really stops there. Most of the conversations tend to focus around, "It's not their jurisdiction," and "They have no power." It happened inside of a house off-campus. Though the school admits that they're monitoring these students, though the school was aware that they knew these students were going to and from, there's not much that they can do. I'm not here to complain about any of the staff administration, but that's really disheartening and discouraging as parents to hear, "There's not much we can do." When you call Reno Police Department, they're so inundated with these kinds of calls, actions, you get the same answer. "There's not much that they can do." So I guess I'm here to start a dialogue with my school board, and I'm asking for your help. It's a problem. I actually opened a Facebook group. That Facebook group is called Strength in Numbers. Within three days of me asking for parents to come together, I have 96 people. Within that group, there's a whole bunch of stories. You guys may or may not be shocked, I was shocked, but of similar situations happening. We're good parents. We want to be involved. We want to be inside of our schools, but we need help, a task force, resources, something. No more, "It's not my jurisdiction, and we can't do anything about it." I appreciate you guys listening. I hope to attend more school boards, and my email is on the comment card. If anyone wants to email me and help me continue this dialogue, I would be very, very appreciative.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beckwith.
Thanks, you guys.
Thanks for working hard on this with us.
Sally Cassis?
Welcome, Ms. Cassis.
Hi, thank you. I'm here with Anisha today, and I also have a son who is 14 and a freshman at McQueen. And in the last two weeks, I've not only found out that he's using marijuana, drinking alcohol, and vaping, I've also discovered the information about this home that's across the street where a freshman student of McQueen lives, and that's where the majority of the drug use is taking place. Children, and I'm calling them children because that's what they are, have been seen coming and going from the house, sometimes in great numbers, and often they're clearly high when they return to school. The school administration and police are limited as to what they can do, and even though they've informed Reno Police Department and the SET team has been out and surveyed the property, they're saying there's nothing that they can do. Not only am I mortified to learn that my child has been at this house and used drugs because, just like Anisha's family, it's a very close family. My child is a good child. This is not how our home is. But there's been a parent at this home that has been present while the kids have used drugs, and it's not just marijuana, there's acid and coke there, and then there's also sexual activity with minors taking place, with children. In the three days after learning about the issue along with Anisha Beckwith and several other concerned parents, we got together, we've been able to identify the students, the home, the property managers and the homeowners, and we're the ones that have been contacting everyone. The school have limited resources, and we need your help. We need them to have more resources. It's not only a welfare issue for the child that lives at this residence, but it's also a welfare issue for all of the students who attend McQueen and anyone else in the vicinity. What if one of these kids gets high and gets in a car and drives away afterwards and kills somebody? I can guarantee that the school district will be included in the lawsuit. The school administration and police are amazing, but they need more help. And I know that you're understaffed and underfunded, but when you don't have any kids left to teach, to educate, because they're in rehab or mental institutions, or they're homeless, or dead, that won't be a problem anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Cassis.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Jerome Guerrero?
Sir, welcome.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Guerrero. I am the Recruiting Battalion Commander for the Nevada Army National Guard, and with me today I have Sergeant Major Josh Lappin, and together we're the Command Team for the Army Recruiters for the National Guard. And we're here today to ask if the policy on graduation accoutrements, if we could get either an exception to policy, or in the future, ask that the policy be amended to allow those seniors that graduate the ability to wear this as an accoutrement on their, with their cap and gown during graduation. The purpose is to help signify and recognize their future service to our state. As you know, the men and women of the Nevada Guard serve the public here within the state. Fires, flooding recently in Lemon Valley, helicopter buckets, different events that we get called to ask. Our primary goal is to help serve the men and women of the state of Nevada. And in recognition of their future service, we wanted to be able to recognize these seniors that are joining our ranks for their service. Currently, within the state of Nevada, we have about 104 seniors that are graduating that will be joining the Army National Guard. Of those, there are 30 within the Washoe County School District that are joining. And we'd like to ask that they be allowed to wear these, or if we can get an exception to policy or a change. One of the things that we will be doing is working with Governor Cicilak and proposing this as an amendment to the state to allow this in every school district, in every high school here in the state of Nevada. We'd like to thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel, and thank you again for being here and for serving us all. Superintendent, is there anyone that we should have them work with on that?
I think we need to look at the policy and then review the policy before we make. I don't know specifically what things are approved. I know there are some things approved, and then look at how we can get that approved through a policy meeting.
Who should we work with them? Who should work with them?
Lisa? I think we need to look at it internally and probably look at it in a more global stance, too. What are things that we might look at, if that is something we're going to look at? But to work with probably the deputy, since it's graduation of students, huh?
Okay, well, we will make sure that we follow up with you, gentlemen, and again, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay.
John Epalito?
Mr. Epalito, welcome.
Thank you. My name is John Epalito. I'm the President of Protect Nevada Children, and I taught school for seven years. This morning, I sent an email to you guys, and it's a quote from Senator Josh Haley, and he was talking to Google two months ago. And here's what the senator said. This is a United States senator. Quote, "Here's my basic concern. Americans have not signed up for this. They think the products you are offering them are free. They're not free. They think that they can opt out of tracking that you are performing. They can't meaningfully opt out. It's kind of like the Old Eagles song. You can check out anytime you like, but you can never leave. That's kind of what it's like dealing with your company, and that's a problem for the American consumer. It's a real problem. And for somebody who has two small kids at home, the idea that your company and others like it are sweeping up information to build a user profile on them that will track every step, every movement, and monetize that they can't do anything about it, and that I can't do anything about it, that's a big problem that this Congress needs to address." End quote. Katie Simon-Holland-Simon, you replied this morning saying you think the Board understands the debate. We at Protect Nevada Children don't think you do. This is about parental rights, and who decides when children start sharing personal data and schoolwork with education vendors? You want it to be, you want it to be the district, but we think parents deserve to make the educated decision. That is what SB 403 would have done. But Washoe County School District single-handedly gutted SB 403, assuring that most parents in Nevada, including the parents of kids using Google Apps for Education, will remain in the dark. Granted, Washoe County School District will escape Google Apps for Education, but what about the other 400,000 kids in the state that you guys affected? Clark County was present for some of the discussions on SB 403. They use Google. They never said a word. In addition, this district has stated at least twice publicly, "Parents cannot decide when children start," and you guys like to frame it in "using technology." We all know that's not what this is about. We all want our kids to learn technology. This is about children sharing personal data and schoolwork with third-party education vendors that Congress can't really police, and now one of them has been sold to the Chinese, and the Chinese certainly aren't going to police it. And to make matters worse, Washoe County School District is the only one in the state that said, "Parents, no parents in the state deserve to be educated on the dangers of children logging in and sharing data with education vendors," and now this district has affected every other child in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epalito. I don't think that was what our testimony said, and I don't think we have that much power over what the legislature did, but...
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Okay. We will go on, then, to action to adopt the agenda. And again, the SHARE curriculum is not on this agenda. I will note, the Board would like to wait on items 3.03 through 3.09, which are zoning items, until 4:00. So I just want to make that announcement now. We want to make sure that people who want to be here to talk about that will be here, or will be able to be here. And when we open those items, we will open them all at once, but then we will be taking action on them individually, those zoning advisory items. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Welcome, Ananti.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Taylor, second by Mr. Kelly. Is there any other discussion on the motion to approve the agenda?
None.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we will go on to our consent agenda, and are there any items that anyone wants to take out of the consent agenda? Mr. Caudill?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to remove 2.06.
Okay. All right. Are there any others that anyone would like to take out of the consent agenda? Are there any questions on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, so we will consider items 2.02 through 2.05, and 2.07 through 2.12. And do we have any public comment on those?
We do. John Epalito?
Mr. Epalito?
John Epalito, just to be clear, President Simon-Holland, your gentleman, I forget his name, the IT guy, he said in this room, and he said at the Nevada State Legislature, and you were surprised when he said it, if you remember, "We do not want children to opt out of," and he framed it in, quote, "using technology." But that's not what we're talking about, and everybody in this room knows that. We're talking about young children sharing data, schoolwork, personal data, and things they shouldn't be sharing with third-party vendors who've already been breached and who've already been sold to the Chinese. And that's one of the biggest ones this district uses. I think after two years, maybe you said you're not going to use it anymore. But that's not why I'm here, but I had to reply. You should know better, Ms. ... by now. 2.02, 2.06, and 2.12, and even though one of them has been pulled off, my question to you guys is, are parents going to be educated on the issues of their children sharing data with these vendors? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epalito.
You're welcome.
David, do you want to respond to the, I'd like you to respond to the families being educated about use of technology and their children. I know you all have been working on that, so I just wanted to give you an opportunity.
Thank you, David. Lacy, Chief of Staff, for the record. It's posted on our website under the Digital Tools tab, and there's a Parent tab, there's a Staff tab, and under the Parent tab, there's a FAQ for Digital Tools that answers all of his questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, then we will be voting on, again, 2.02 through 2.05, and 2.07 through 2.12. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Calvert. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's open 2.06, which is consideration of the approval of the extension of the letters of agreement between the Washoe County School District and Excelify, a software and special education process management firm, in the estimated amount of $499,273 for the terms of April 12, 2019, to June 30, 2019, and July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2020. Dr. Green and Dr. McNeil, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to ask your question? Please. Trustee Caudill?
Yeah, so in my tour of my schools doing staff meet and greets, every time I speak with a special education teacher, they've all said that the Excelify program isn't good for the staff. Many are saying that they're working past contract time, coming in the weekends, just to complete all of the work that has to go into it. And so, I mean, it's literally every single teacher that I've come in contact with. So seeing this on the agenda, I wanted to pull it to at least talk it through, because teachers have asked me if the Board can to please go in a different direction. And not being familiar with it, I don't really know what that means, go in a different direction, but I think it's good to at least have the conversation on why the district feels we should renew, and to address the concerns that at least I've heard from special education teachers in the schools.
Byron Green, Chief Student Services Officer, for the record. President Simon-Holland, Superintendent Davis, and members of the Board. Wasn't sure if Superintendent Davis wanted to kick off, or if you wanted me to give background about the purpose for Excelify and how we actually came to start using it.
Sure, you can give purpose, but I want to start off, but let's go back to 2012, 2014, when the Nevada State Department of Education put a cap on the district. I think you were still a Board member when we had that huge cap, because we did not have a successful system of tracking students' records, and we were in many violations. As a result, we had to do something differently to ensure that all student records were housed in a common area, and that we had accurate means of tracking the success and implementation of IEPs. After a couple of years, I think we implemented a program, and eventually we were removed from that cap as part of a lot of work that we did with WestEd and them looking at our special ed problem. Is that concise? You know?
I think that's great, Superintendent. What I can also maybe add to that for the trustees is, the Excelify, what it is, it is, it's a document system that actually helps us codify or makes sure we can manage these students' individualized educational program, or the IEP. So the work that, I believe that teachers, maybe you're referring to when you do meet with teachers, is the actual creation of that IEP. Minimally, they need to be held, an IEP meeting held once a year, depending on the student. Obviously, they can reconvene if any member requests, either that they feel that the IEP is not meeting the students' needs, or if the student has already met the goals and objectives in that IEP. Early childhood students, for example, meet twice a year. So the purpose of that Excelify is not the work that it does, it's really what the IEP team determines is appropriate for that child, for that goals and objectives, what accommodations, modifications to student needs, and then this system just documents those, along with how the IEP is implemented. Just to remind the trustees that the IEP is a legal document. It's one of the few legal documents we have in education in regards to, it's really a legal commitment that our district is saying we're going to provide this additional education and support. I believe Superintendent Davis is correct in regards to, it does require more things Excelify does than the previous program that we did use, and one of the reasons the district did choose Excelify is, our district was receiving numerous corrective actions from the state to be able to say why we were not implemented, what was services were not being provided. For example, we could not, as a district, tell if speech-language pathology or SLP services were being provided during that week as a district level, looking down, saying, "Okay, we have 100 speech pathologists. How do we ensure that IEPs are being implemented from that level?" So it is a much more systemic program. We think it does provide more accountability, not only for our district, but for families. I know that Dr. McNeil is here to talk, if you'd like specifics in regards to, there's a significant amount of support that has been provided for teachers and is continually provided for teachers in regards for open labs. We have administrators who go onsite to provide, from Student Services, who provide support for teachers. But really, I think the biggest paradigm shift that, at least from our perspective, we're seeing from special education teachers, is that stronger piece of accountability that if the IEP says, "We're going to do A, B, and C," how do we make sure we're implementing A, B, and C, and we're documenting A, B, and C? And then obviously, to improve student outcomes. So I don't know if that helps the overview, or if you have any additional questions, or Dr. McNeil?
So I'll just add real quickly. So the Excelify program has built-in safeguards, so a IEP team, Individual Education Plan team, which includes our LEAs, our principals, our assistant principals, who are allowed to be LEAs, our teachers, that they can project the actual IEP and then work with the parent and the IEP team to develop what that looks like on the screen. So it's a different type of system than we've had in the past, but it's a much more technical type system, but there are safeguards built in, so that, as Dr. Green stated, we don't have the issues as far as not being compliant with IEPs. So if you remember, just from the previous meeting and the budget presentation that we had, we approved, you all approved, thankfully, a position for the Compliance Department, and that's exactly what this position would do, is actually monitor what that looks like. Remember, we have over 9,000 students with IEPs, and so this is a heavy lift for the district, but with the support that we've been able to provide through the Office of Student Services, through Compliance and OSL, we think that we're doing a good job. But as with any implementation, whether you're talking Infinite Campus, whether you're talking Business Plus, there's going to be blips in the road, and we understand that, but we need to get that support. We have the Compliance Department who actually has a help desk, and they field about 35 emails a day from principals, from teachers. Our instructional coordinators go out to the schools. They actually have monthly meetings with our IEP case managers to make sure that they are getting the support that they need.
If I could also add one thing, trustee, the service provided, obviously, for students with disabilities, they vary, just like all of our students' needs vary. Some students have very complicated needs and very long IEPs. So many supports that are provided for the teachers and for schools are either provided by the principal or Student Services. For example, when our students matriculate from elementary to middle, or middle to high, we want to make sure that both school teams can be part of that transition. So we actually pay for substitute teachers, and we allow those teachers to be able to spend time with the families in those IEP transition meetings. I also know that some principals, as a former principal myself, would actually provide either substitute days or different scheduling times because of the demands of special education teachers, provide them extra time if they had a difficult or higher caseload than other special education teachers, in addition to other services that we provide centrally. So I think your question is valid in regards to, special education teachers have a different type of lift than a comprehensive teacher, but definitely support is provided.
Dr. Taylor?
Oh, did you have a follow-up? Trustee Caudill? Thank you, Madam President, and thanks to both you, Doctors Green and McNeil. I was here not when the ceiling was placed in, but when, I was here when the WestEd did their report. And as I recall, one of the challenges that we as a district had was that the tracking wasn't very good, and that we needed to improve that because it wasn't providing the best level of service for this vulnerable population. And I know that that's one of the recommendations that we got from WestEd, that we needed to do. We had a lot of things we had to do, quite frankly, but that was one of them, we needed to do a better job than that, and I think that's kind of how we got to doing it this way. Can you talk a little bit? You're nodding, so you may have been here, Trustee Kelly, when the stop was placed. Can you just talk a little bit, though, for all of us, really, and especially our new trustees, the difference between what the teacher, the special ed teacher, has to do now versus what they did then, and how that's closing that gap? It's really about giving the service to the kids, right, and providing the support for the families that they need. Can you talk a little bit about the differences, which may help explain some of what the feedback that I'm sure many of us have gotten, but outweigh that with the support now that we're doing for those kids and their families?
Sure. Byron Green, Chief Student Service Officer, for the record. If I also may also add even from the district level, what this is providing us, you know, just not only from the teacher, but also the district level, which I think has really benefited us. From the teacher level, the previous program we were able to use, I think Dr. McNeil referenced, there were different types of safeguards. So any kind of program you use, it allowed the teacher, the case manager who is leading the IEP meeting, to be able to create different sections even ahead of the IEP meeting. So obviously, one of our families received draft IEPs, but there's a requirement in the sequence on how that IEP is built. So that way, the team theoretically, or how you look at IDA, or the Individuals with Education Act, Disabilities Education Act, is that IEP should be built as they meet together. To do that, though, it's maybe not always fair to families, where you want them to get as much information upfront. I think this program for Excelify really requires, and there's a lot of safeguards that make sure that we, number one, are in compliance with that IEP, but that is being very thoughtful. For example, a lot of in our previous program, they could identify, the IEP team could say, "This student needs these 20 accommodations," you know, whatever those accommodations would be for the class. This new system requires, if a student needs an accommodation, it has to be connected to the actual data that we're actually seeing for the student. So Byron has difficulty focusing, "That's my present level of performance." Byron is performing this well in reading and math, so Byron needs to have these three or four things which will help them, and that would be an accommodation that would be linked to my present levels and my need. The previous program, there was no linking between the present levels of performance, the measurable goals and objectives, or the accommodations. So therefore, just even from the student or teacher level, it could be done in isolation. From a district level, we're actually able to work with business to start allocating staff much more closely, so are related services. Before, it was just very difficult to identify when we need another OT, another PT, another SLP. We're actually able to look at staff, we're able to look at to see what administrators are leading the IEPs, if there are concerns with IEPs down the road. We can actually pull reports to see who's leading IEPs. We can look at the quality of the actual measurable goals and objectives to see, are they really measurable? Are they standard-based? Are we trying to meet the needs of students? And we're actually now building, because of this new system, a way we can actually track student progress through this system where before we could not, that we're connected to our big business intelligence gateway. So I don't know if that helps from the teacher perspective, and also maybe from the district. It's just a much more integrative system rather than just a standalone that really we weren't feeling was benefiting students and really getting us the outcomes that we needed.
Dr. McNeil?
Just very quickly, I think one of the things that our staff has really worked on hard is the goals and objectives. And in the past, we've had systems to where we may have cut and pasted a goal. So Kristen's goal is very different than Byron's goal, and that's where we get into the Individual Educational Plan. And so it's very important that our teachers and our case managers are aware of And so it's very important that our teachers and our case managers are aware of the individual needs for our special education students, and Excelify does help with that as well.
I'd have a question for, do you have another question trustee Cotto? Okay. I was just going to ask if there are other providers that provide the same sort of fidelity and depth of information that are easier to use, just if any were looked at.
I can answer that question Byron Green for the record. We did look when the WestEd report came in, and I think the trustee is correct, we had a lot of things to do. One of those was really be thoughtful in regards to how we were building systems and structures and support. We did look at multiple systems. At that time, Infinite Campus is the student information system for the state, the SIS that we use just for basic information. The state recommended at that time that that student information system of Infinite Campus also be the one that provide that support for IEP systems, for that monitoring. We purposely held off for a year to kind of see how that rolled out, what was going to happen, but essentially the Infinite Campus, at least in our opinion, it really is an SIS that wasn't created for IEP compliance, for Medicaid reimbursements, and for monitoring for student progress. So we did do an RFP, we went, I believe we did an RFP, it's been such a long time ago, I forget, but we looked at multiple programming and we felt that Excelify did everything that we were asking for within those tenants. Strong Medicaid reimbursements for our districts where we're being responsible. I think you also saw today that we actually increased from our projected $350,000 from actuals for our Medicaid this year versus all of these components. I think the challenge that we have as a district or as educators is the IEP itself is just a very, it's not a simple document. It's very complicated, it's very individualized, and it does require a lot of technical expertise and experience. So we try to do the best we can to support teachers, we try to reduce the ratios. Part of that WestEd report a few years ago because we knew of this lift is we worked with the school leadership department and we eliminated the .5 resource positions and we created 1.0s. So that way, teachers would have a smaller caseload for resource students. That was one example of how we try to reduce that load on teachers. So at some point, to answer your question trustee, I think there may be simpler ones, but the challenge is, as Superintendent Davis said, is then where's that level of compliance to make sure they're actually implementing versus the ease of use?
And just real quickly, I'll just say, you know, on the record, the State Department of Education, we worked very, very closely with the Nevada Department of Education to make sure that our IEP template was actually approved by the state. So it is an approved IEP document through the Excelify process.
Trustee Cotto?
Yeah, thank you for that explanation, that's very helpful to me. So I'm, I have my questions answered. I think since we're approving this for basically a year, I think over the next year, I think as a district, it's important to really get into the schools and help our teachers maybe more efficient in doing this, because what I'm hearing from teachers is just to complete their responsibilities they have to do nights and weekends, and I think that's a slippery slope because it's way over their contract time and I've heard that at every, every special education teacher that I talked to said the same thing. And so I think that that's important to ensure that we're doing what we can to support them, to try to limit that as much as possible. So I have, I have all my questions answered, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on that item? Okay, do we have a motion? Dr. Taylor? Oh. Everybody's leaning.
I'll make it.
Yeah, okay, Vice President Raymond.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 2.06.
Thank you, is there a second? Second by trustee Manetto. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Green, Dr. McNeil, for a very thorough discussion, we appreciate that. Okay. That will take us to item 3.01, it's the Mark Mathers Show again, which is approval of Washoe County School District Board Resolution 19-006, a resolution of intent proposing the issuance of up to $100 million in general obligation bonds additionally secured with pledged revenues, providing the manner, form, and content of the notices and authorizing officers of the district to take other actions necessary to complete the issuance and related matters. Mr. Mathers?
Thank you, Madam President, I'll make it much shorter than our special meeting at noon today. This item simply continues the process to issue $100 million of general obligation bonds pledged by the WC1 sales tax measure, which was approved by voters in November of 2016. This would go to ultimately fund, if approved, the expansion of Swope Middle School, construction of a new elementary school in Cold Springs, and construction of a new high school in the Wild Creek area. So it was last month that you authorized us to go to the Debt Management Commission for approval of these bonds. We met last week with the Debt Management Commission, they did approve the $100 million of additional bonds, and so again, this item simply continues the process. It would start the clock on a 90-day petition period whereby residents could voice their concern and for issuance of these bonds. There will also be a series of public notices in the newspaper to apprise them of that process, and then we'll hold a hearing in late July to actually adopt a resolution, a bond resolution to, as the last step to issue these bonds. And so in summary, just to clarify, you might wonder, how do we complete all three of those projects with just $100 million? This $100 million of authorization will be combined with 215 million of authorized but unused authorization of WC1 bonds. So combined, they'll provide funding of up to 315 million for those three facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers, and I just want to put on the record, this will last for several years, these projects are not going to be done next year. Don't want anyone to think we're moving forward on some plan to remodel Swope Middle School next month, where this will, this will take several years to complete this, but we have to have the bonds issued so that we have the resources available to begin the planning and the preparation and all of the site development and all the things that go into projects of this size and scope.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Any public comment? Is there any, are there any more questions or discussion by the board? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 19-006, a resolution of intent proposing the issuance of up to 100 million in general obligation bonds, bonds, not buns, bonds, we don't need the million dollars in buns, providing the manner, form, and consent of the notices and authorizing officers of the district to take other action necessary to complete the issuance and related matters.
Thank you, is there a second? Second by trustee Cotto. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mathers. Okay. Our next item is a, an HR item, Ms. Ellison and Chris Reich, and I know Virginia's here too as well, Virginia's not here, okay. Okay, all right. This item is presentation, discussion, and possible action relative to Nevada Revised Statute NRS 288.155 regarding the prohibition on paying to or on behalf of any employee in the affected bargaining units, any compensation or monetary benefits in any amount greater than the amount in effect as of the expiration of the collective bargaining agreements, and approval of the exceptions contained in subsections 3A, an increase in compensation or monetary benefits during the first quarter of the next ensuing fiscal year of the local government employer, I know this is hard, after the expiration of a collective bargaining agreement, and 3B, an increase in the employer's portion of the matching contribution rate for employees and employers in accordance with an adjustment in the rate of contributions pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute 286.450. This is much simpler than it sounds, and I will allow Mr. Reich and Ms. Ellison to explain it.
Good afternoon, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. Is there a prize for longest agenda item title? I think I win. Thank you for your time today. During the 2015 legislative session, Senate Bill 241 amended NRS 288.155, and in summary, local government employers are prohibited from paying to or on behalf of employees any compensation or monetary benefits greater than the amount in effect as of the expiration of the collective bargaining agreement. So what that means for us is that all the collective bargaining agreements we currently have in place expire June 30th, 2019, and while we all hope to have new agreements in place prior to that expiration, in the event that we don't, we're here today to discuss the two exceptions that are allowed under the SB 241 amendment to NRS 288.155. So one of those exceptions allows the district to proceed with an increase in mandated PERS contributions, and there's typically a cost share arrangement whereby the employer and the employee split the cost of that increase, and so the first exception would allow us to make that change effective July 1st, 2019, when that PERS increase goes into effect. And included in the meeting packet was notification that was sent to staff regarding that increase and an indication by bargaining group, excuse me, of the change that would occur to each salary schedule in order to cover the employee's portion of that increase. The other exception allows for implementation of salary schedule roll-ups, or also referred to as step increases, and other monetary benefits for the first quarter of the fiscal year, which includes July, August, and September for fiscal year 20. In the event that there's not an agreed upon collective bargaining agreement in effect by the end of that first quarter, so in September of 2019, then the salary schedule and any other monetary benefits implemented for the first fiscal quarter would revert back to the terms of the collective bargaining agreement in place the prior collective bargaining agreement. So for your consideration today is whether or not to implement those statutory exceptions as outlined for the first quarter of fiscal year 20, while we continue to work with our associations to negotiate new collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, thank you. And so the net effect of this potential action is that if we did not take action to allow those exceptions, we would have, we would have employees at July 1st having a decrease to their pay to reflect the PERS increase without having step increases and other normal advancements in compensation that would have offset it. And so we had to take this action or consider this action before the end of the fiscal year and before that collective bargaining agreement expires. Mr. Reich, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, President Simon Holland. No, you're correct.
Well, you know, not everyone can hear your nod, so.
Just agreement with your comment.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, is, yes, trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Just two things, one is a question, the other one's a comment. The question, budgetarily have we provided for this knowingly going into this and that there would be an increase or?
Someone want to answer, David? Good question.
Thank you. David Lasik, Chief of Staff for the record, yes, we have assumed it in our budget.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, and my comment on that would be, thank you, Mr. Lasik, my comment on it would be, you know, I would, I would actually hate to see our teachers and staff have a decrease, knowing that we're in negotiations for, we don't know for what, but the whole idea is to certainly not, not do that, so I would hate to have them experience, experience a decrease unnecessarily.
Absolutely, and we know how hard our educators work, and we know how difficult it is when certainly, all of us are recognizing the pinch that our staff feels with, you know, cost of living increases that don't always meet the requirements of living in this region. So anything else, oh, we have public comment, let's hear, or do you have a question before we go to?
No, I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to concur with Dr. Taylor, I think it's important that we give our staff some, some much-needed good news after a tough, tough budget cycle, so I think this is very appropriate for us to do.
Great, thank you. JJ?
Allison Kendrick and Vanji Russell.
Welcome, Ms. Kendrick and Ms. Russell, dynamic duo.
Hi, I'm Allison Kendrick, President of the School Principals Association.
I'm Vanji Russell, President of ACTA.
And we're here in support of this item, we just want to come to you as representatives of our collective bargaining agencies and say that we're supportive of this, and we believe that allowing the roll-ups and the PERS contribution to happen as they might even if we're not finished with negotiations would go a long way in building consensus and keeping goodwill and helping those of us that are in the negotiations team move forward towards some positive agreement. So we would, we would love for you to support this item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we do, we do take to heart that this is an important time for us to, to show our support for our staff because we do appreciate them. We also want to make sure that everybody is clear that statute says we get this exception for one quarter, so we all have, we all have the clock ticking to make sure our collective bargaining agreements are completed, and that was the intention of the timeline in statute, I believe, was that we all move forward with, with great intention. Any other public comment, JJ? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I am prepared to make a motion.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approves and directs staff to implement the statutory exceptions in Nevada Revised Statute 288.155.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice President Raymond. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I know Vanji and Allison and Mr. Strauss will take that message back to their bargaining units and let them know we, we appreciate them. Okay, I'm thinking it's, it's only, it's not even quite 10 minutes to 3. Sorry? Yeah, why don't we move to the legislative report? Oh, it's not on there?
Did we not put it on?
Apparently it's not on, yeah, okay, we won't do the legislative report, but we could do, well, I think we could do the non-action item, which is 3.03. How about if we do that and then we wait until 4 o'clock for the, for the action items? Would that be a good use of time, or do you want to wait? They are combined, I mean, they are.
I feel like 3.03 has some important information for the general public to hear as part of the vote, so.
Why don't we, why don't we do superintendent's report and board reports? Okay. Okay, good. All right, let's do you first, we'll take that out of order. Well, because, yeah, you suggested it, except you said board reports, I know you. Okay.
All right, you want to go first?
No, if the board were going, we can go.
Okay, that's great.
All right, go ahead, Dr. Taylor. What we're trying to do is, is make sure that we have folks be able to be here for the zoning items, which start at 3.03, so we're trying to get other business done and wait to do that until 4 o'clock. So we may have a period where we have a recess, but we're going to do other business that we can, so Dr. Taylor, board reports.
Okay, thank you. In addition to, in addition to school visits, and also having had the opportunity, the distinct honor, I should say, of attending Reno High School, had a celebration of 100 years of their ROTC program, and I was invited to attend with, with the family of Master Sergeant Tao. This was shortly after his death, and they did a special presentation to him, and so I was just honored to be there and just, you know, show, represent the board and just show how much we appreciated the work of our Master Sergeant Tao. One of the other things I was able to do in, over these last few weeks, is I had my visit to TMCC High School, and I spoke to the students at an assembly, and TMCC High School had some swag around, and so I commandeered some of it.
Ah.
For us, for us, although it was, they would have given me more, give more, take more to them, take more to them. And so what you'll see before you is one of these little sticky situations that goes on the back of your cell phone, that you can put some things in, and then also, everybody, we need to be wearing our TMCC High School wristbands, and we certainly need to wear these to graduation this week. And then we have very, very nice ink pens, by the way.
I know, it's already in use.
Yes, yes, I am using mine as well, and if I had more arms, I would have gotten all of you a coffee mug like I got. It's really nice to. It's really nice, too. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else have, Mr. Cottle?
Yeah. So last week, I had the privilege to go do a school visit in Gerlach, which was pretty cool, to see the unique atmosphere up there, see their current building that's in operation as well as the other building that's not. It's like a time capsule. Everything just froze when they abandoned it in 2011 or 2010. Got to tour the mobile homes where teachers live. It's a completely new, different environment up there that was, I was excited to take a part in. Also, I was representing the board at the WIA Awards banquet on Friday, which was a lot of fun to see teachers just kind of let loose and all the teachers that are retiring getting that much closer to their retirement. So we had a good time.
Great, thank you for representing us there. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. A number of us were at the Marcy Hur's groundbreaking ceremony, and despite it being a very cold and chilly day, I think the warmth of the moment helped everybody get through it. A lot of great speakers, you know, there was family members of Marcy Hur's that were there, the future principal of that school spoke, community members, and of course, the students, I think, were the highlight. A lot of students from Hunsburger came over, and so I just thought that was a great event, and I'm looking forward to having more of those for other schools.
That's great, and it was fun to see your son there, who will attend Marcy Hur's Middle School. That's great. Ms. Minetto.
Well, I had the joy of going to Sparks Middle School with Trustee Raymond, and I got to see a whole bunch of my students there, the kids I taught just last year, and it was thrilling to me. And then we also went to a presentation of 4th grade from Roycom, the Little Reno Theater. And they wrote it, they produced it, they ran the lights, they ran the sound, and it was amazing. It was really good. And then I also got to help with the TMCC senior presentations, which was exciting to me.
That's great, all right. And Auntie, do you have anything you want to report?
So we had our last meeting last Tuesday, and it was actually, it was very productive for like last week. I thought it was just going to be like, you know, all of us just hanging out and talking about what we're going to do next year. But the upcoming seniors next year, they came up with an idea to implement like an equity project for next year that they're going to take that entire year to plan, really. So two of our North Valley representatives went to a student voice conference with Michelle Hammond at Sacramento, I believe, and they were like just learning about how other states and how other schools like really implement like student voice and how, like what their methods are. And they discovered that California has a required class that teaches like tolerance of other religions and like, basically like how other, like how to coexist with people that are different with you, and like they teach you about like, not just religions, but like cultures, and like it's a lot of awareness for like the 21st century and how, you know, living in America is different. And it's really cool, they were just like talking about like how students get the opportunity to really talk about their background, like what makes them different, why either being a first-generation student or so on is, you know, like with the difficulties that have to do with it. And it's a really cool class from what I've heard, and so our board heard about it, and they want to take like the time next year to implement it and see what they can do to have like an elective like that here at Washoe.
Great, thanks for the report. And thanks for the good work by your group. It's a very, very, very exciting group. Okay, Trustee Calvert.
Well, Ellen and I went to foster-grandparent luncheon at the Nugget, and that was a lot of fun. I saw people there that I had worked with or had known, and so that was fun. I went to Mindive and met the principal there, and I went to Reed, and then me and Deputy McNeil went to Natchez, and I just really, really enjoyed the experience there and meeting the principal and the teachers and the culture. It was just really very, very special. Very special.
Thank you. Vice President Raymond.
All right. It's been busy, and it's only getting busier, so I have a lot on my list. Was joined by Trustee Cottle and Trustee Minetto for the Parent Teacher Home Visit Awards. They had some professional development work they did, but before they got started, we got to recognize those teachers and staff that have done 30 or more home visits this year. It was a great energetic group and an honor to be able to recognize them for their hard work and also for their recognition by the Seattle Times as a whole for our program of home visits. Enjoyed the groundbreaking, but it was a little cold. Really enjoyed being able to go to the multicultural senior awards night. It was the first time I've been able to make it, and it was so meaningful and really well-done from start to finish by Tiffany Young and her team. So that was an honor to be part of. Got to then the next day celebrate Tiffany at the Salute to Women of Achievement event. We won for the loudest table cheer, I think, so...
Yes, we did. We had complaints from...
And then that night got to, was joined again by Trustee Minetto and Trustee Kelly at the Re-Energize Reno Awards, where the Washoe County School District was recognized as an award of excellence for the work we're doing just across the district to make our buildings more efficient, and really the work of Pete Etchart and Jason Geddes that they do, and how we also incorporate our students in that work, that they are learning about how to be more energy-efficient in their homes, but also to look at ways to make the schools more energy-efficient. So that was an honor to be able to accept the award that night. But I do have to say, a real highlight was going to Sparks Middle School with Trustee Minetto. The kids, their faces when they saw her, and, you know, had no idea that she was going to be there, and they come into the assembly and they see their former teacher, they just lit up, and she got about 150 hugs, I think, from these kids, and it was really special. I'm glad I got to see her in her true environment. So, that's it.
That's great. Well, I attended several other things that have been mentioned, the Marcy Hur's groundbreaking, the multicultural senior recognition, the Women of Achievement Luncheon. I also, as your representative on the Regional Planning and Governing Board, attended the governing board meeting last Thursday, along with Adam and Pete, and Kristen was there on another item. And as you'll recall, the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency, Regional Planning and Governing Board, has been considering whether to make all school construction a requirement for a project of regional significance, which would add considerable complexity to our approval process for building new schools. And the staff has been working diligently with the TMRPA about that. They had three options, the Regional Planning and Governing Board had three options before them, and the school district, the school board representative is a non-voting member of that body. So we go and we raise our hand when we can, but there were three options before them. One was to bring more attention to the requirement we currently have for a facilities master plan to be presented to the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency, so that we would be forecasting out five years, here's where we're planning to have new schools and what type of schools they would be, so that the Regional Planning Agency can ensure that there's the appropriate infrastructure, that build-out, and all those things are taken into consideration. That was one option. Second option was to require that schools over a certain threshold of enrollment, and generally it would only be middle schools or high schools, but they could have gone with all schools, being projects of regional significance. And then the third option was to create a subcommittee that would work between the Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Planning and Governing Board to come up with a solution to what should be the right thing. And so the board opted for the third option, which was to create a subcommittee of the Regional Planning and Governing Board and the Regional Planning Commission. And so they were moving forward with that, and I stuck my hand up and I said, you know, would it be possible for us to be part of that subcommittee since we are a crucial part of this, even though we're not voting members? And they said absolutely. So we will be included in that subcommittee. And then it also, and my apologies to my colleagues, later in the meeting, in their request for future agenda items, they indicated a request for an agenda item to discuss having the school district, school board's representative become a voting member of the Regional Planning and Governing Board. So my apologies to whoever follows me on that, on that, but it is important, and it's not currently in state law that the members of the Regional Planning and Governing Board, voting members, would include a school board representative, so that would be down the road. But I just wanted to share that with all of you. And then I did attend the Incline JROTC Awards Night. Went right from the Regional Planning and Governing Board, drove through the snow to get to the Incline JROTC Awards, but they are so wonderful. And, you know, Incline's a small school, you know, about 300 students. 60% of the students at Incline join the JROTC. 60%, yeah. It's an amazing, I'm sorry, did I get that wrong? 20%, 60 kids, woo, sorry. 60 kids, 60 kids, which is 20%, but that's a huge, that's a huge percentage, 20% of the entire student body, and they do a tremendous job. Their community service project is our Veterans Guest House here, and so, yeah, wonderful group of kids. Okay, we will move on then to the superintendent's report. Did I give you enough time, Madam Superintendent? Okay.
I'm going to start with shout-out to some employees. Shout-out to a couple employees last Monday. I got to work with school police and dispatch for half a day with Leah, Monica, and Chana See. Did I say that right? What a crazy job they have in there, but such a great team, small but mighty. They do a lot way before we even step into the building, so shout-out to them. And then a shout-out to Nutrition Services. I did the food truck, which was a surprise to all the kids at Pine. It was great to serve them some lovely meals from our nursery truck, and the meals are truly very delicious. And shout-out to that team. We had a high school principals luncheon, which was really great. We'll eventually have one for middle school, and then we'll break elementary schools down. And shout-out to all the high schools who are like getting into graduation mode last minute. At the luncheon, one of the principals asked me to call her kiddo, and today I found out that he's going to graduate, so happy that the deputy and myself have been calling kids all weekend to just finish the race and encourage them at the request of the principals. So they give us the list, and we do the calling, and so we're the big cheerleaders, and so we've seen a lot of momentum to finish that out.
What do people, what do the kids feel like when you, I'm not supposed to discuss...
Well, I'll just say, how about I just tell you? It's shock and awe, you'll hear people go, "It's the superintendent on the phone," right? Like, sometimes it's a, "What did you do wrong?"
Yeah, exactly.
But then when we tell them, they're so excited, and a lot of these kids have a lot of grit and resiliency, and the parents see that, too. So they're very grateful that we called just to give them another kudos. Actually did a home visit last week, and it was great because the student that we visited, I actually met a trainer like six months earlier. So I went with the teacher Tara on a home visit partnership. We stayed about an hour, and it was a great time. And I think when we talk about our home visits, why it's important and why we do that work around family engagement. This teacher actually, which is really cool because she had the brother, the brother will be graduating from HUG, and the student we went to visit, the brother will be in the 8th grade, so she's been with this family for a long, long time. Good work happening. Want to thank all the employees and especially thank the leadership team as we are in session and anything happens, as I saw the text messages flying for the past 10 minutes. And so just a quick update, beyond all that, I have spent some time in Carson City and testified on SB 505 and SB 543. So SB 505 was appropriation to Washoe enrollment issues, received a unanimous vote out of the Senate Finance Committee last night, late last night. It moved on to the Senate floor and over to the Assembly in the coming days, and that's our $8.1 million or so. The Department of Ed did ask for an amendment to true up the numbers around the actual enrollment numbers, but that was fine. SB 543, the modernization of the funding formula, and I know that Trustee Raymond has been working on this with NSBA also, but is expected to be amended and voted on on the Senate floor in the coming days. It appears additional amendments are being requested from Assembly members. Expect this to be part of the final day effort, and so if you're watching this, you can hear lots of stuff, and it is going to be my goal to get you the PowerPoint. For those of you who did not see it, try to put that in the superintendent's highlights so you can see that PowerPoint that was presented by Jeremy Aguero. SB 551, it was a great week, Memorial Day weekend, because every minute I waited for Lindsey to call and tell me something. So introduced on Monday, removes the sunset of the modified business tax and uses the funds to restore the reductions made to the Governor's School Safety Task Force funding recommendations. Increasing Zoom and Victory appropriations, and authorizes the Clark County School District to receive funds to pay for more school police officers under, is it the More Cops Bill? Is that what it's called? I forget. Cops, yeah, that's a specific bill to them. And that's the latest and the greatest besides all the stuff you all just worked on with ELL. Thanks.
Okay, that is great stuff. Okay. All right, so we have covered our board reports and our superintendent's reports, and we have a request, how about any future agenda item requests? Do we have any of those items that anyone wants to? Mr. Cottle?
If this is possible, potentially, if it's a board policy to allow for the students to wear that military sash at the graduations for this term, if that can be, if that's an action item by us, we would need to do that next week.
Right. Let's...
We missed some, though, but if we want to do it for this year, it'd have to be next week, or else we would miss them all.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the policy, and the agenda's already prepared, but it hasn't been posted yet, so I'll let you consider that, Superintendent. And we'll see. I think there's general agreement that we would like to do that, and certainly we do have kids wearing their ROTC sash, so I, you know, yep, I'm sorry, discussing before... Okay, all right, we'll give the superintendent that, yeah, I know, I got kicked under the table because I was starting to discuss something.
Neil just does that.
Okay. I think we've done everything that we can do before we come back to zoning, and it's now about 3, almost 3:10. So we will be in recess until 4 o'clock. I'm just, yes, ma'am?
Oh, I'm talking to the deputy.
Okay. We will come back at 4 o'clock, and of course, remind trustees that we won't discuss anything that is or on our agenda for today until that time. Yep, okay, we're in recess till 4 o'clock. Okay, we will call the meeting back to order for this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, May 28th, and we will open items 3.03 through 3.09 at one time. 3.03 is the presentation discussion of the work of the zoning advisory committee during the 2018-19 school year, including an overview of community outreach efforts, enrollment projection process, high school rezoning considerations, and recommendations stemming from the construction of Marcy Hur's Middle School. This first one, 3.03, is not an action item, this is an overview, but then we will go through 3.04, 3.05, 3.06, 3.07, 3.08, and 3.09 individually. Again, they're all open, but we will vote on them separately. My expectation is that we will take action on them one at a time as we go through. So that's our process, and I will turn it over to Dr. Lamarcas. Ms. Smith, welcome to you as well. And I think before we begin, I know all of us as trustees want to thank you and your committee for the tremendous amount of work that has been done. We, I know none of us can even imagine or appreciate how much work you have done on behalf of the school district and the community to bring these recommendations to us, so our hearts and our thanks go out to you and the committee. And not to be left out, Adam Cersei, also our chief facilities management officer. And I do want to say as well that I know the staff has given hundreds of hours to this process, Paul and Adam and others who are here, so Randy, wherever Randy Baxley, there you are. So I just want to thank you also, staff members, because you have done a tremendous amount of extra hours, late nights, very intense, very emotional conversations we have had to deal with. So thank you all for doing so much work on behalf of our students and families. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Lamarcas.
Thank you very much, President Simon-Holland. Superintendent Davis, for the record, my name is Paul Lamarcas, I'm the chief ombudsman and strategies officer. This is a very exciting night for us, believe it or not. I'm not sure I ever thought I... I'm not sure I ever thought I would say zoning would be an exciting night for me, but it is. We have a, we, you know, with the passage of WC-1 and the ability to build schools, we find ourselves with some really big, difficult problems, and they're great to have because it means we can provide more optimal learning situations for more of our kids, and that's what we're all about. As you stated, we're gonna go through just kind of some context. I think it's really important that you just have some general context regarding the work of the Zoning Advisory Committee, some of the kind of questions that we faced, you know, throughout this year, and then we'll move into the action items. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Smith.
Thank you very much, Paul. So thank you so much for that warm welcome, President Holland, Vice President Raymond, and the entire Board of Trustees. As mentioned before, my name is Beth Smith, and I am very proud to be this year's Chair of the Zoning Advisory Committee. We are in our second year of process, and we are a 13-member committee representing you. So we are an extension of the Board of Trustees, and a majority of us are individually appointed by each of you as well. In addition to that, we have members that represent at-large parents or community members, and then also other positions within our committee that represent district employees and staff at different levels. We are a very diverse group, and just like you, we come from all the different areas of our district, which is very, very important. That means that we represent all the different perspectives from the different schools that you represent in your areas, and again, with those at-large positions, and then also the representatives from the district as well. And those differences really are our strengths. One thing that we do share, even for all of our differences, is that we are all new to this process. None of us have ever done anything like this before. So we are all getting out of our comfort zone, getting involved in our communities in a way that none of us have. And I believe that that is a very important, fresh perspective that is outside of some of the other processes with the district that I think is a very important thing to point out. So moving on, this was our 2018-19 meeting schedule. There is one change to note on this slide. We did not have the October meeting, so that should be removed from this slide. But when you look at the remainder of the meetings, what you'll see here is that we had more meetings out in the community than we had here in the boardroom. So we do traditionally start and end our years here, while we begin the early parts of our work with the presentations with the district, and then as soon as possible, we get out into the communities to meet with the families in their own backyards where we can be closest to them. And I believe that that brings us to the best possible recommendations and outcome for the committee and for the Board. Community outreach, this is something that we very much take to heart. As we discussed, we're all representing you individually and the Board, and making sure that we are engaging with parents and families and administrators at the affected schools is extremely important. So you can see here on this slide, these are just some of the baseline tactics that we employ each year, including making sure... Yes?
Don't hit that button.
Including making sure that we have calls in multiple languages, that we have language support at our community meetings. We had a recent zoning information night, which was not for action, but was for just community outreach at Worcester High School that had a great turnout, and many other great tactics. In addition to what you see here, there are a few things that are really important to point out, and that is all of the affected principals who have schools that have been discussed have been reached out to by the administrative team. Many of your own committee members also attend schools that are up for discussion, including myself, with Colton Ranch Elementary School, and have spoken to the principals, have met with the PFA's, have had our zoning advisory email addresses and contact information shared with the parents at the affected schools. And it's not just me, there are many people on the committee that actually did that, including Christina Pearson, who should be joining us shortly. She's a parent at Brown, and she represents Trustee Kelly down in South Reno. And I believe that that's very important to point out, that we are very engaged in our own school communities, and then also the community at large with Facebook, which is a very powerful tool for sharing information and making sure that our community members feel that there are not too many layers between them and the decisions that are being made. Beyond all of this, I can say that all of us on a daily basis are stopped, whether it's at birthday parties, myself in the grocery store, and people will come up to us and say, "We know who you are, and can you explain this?" And that's fantastic. That shows that we have a community face, that people are comfortable talking with us, and although we may be discussing things where we have a difference of personal opinion, we can certainly share that they have access to us and that their thoughts and opinions are affecting our process. And so that's something that I really wanted to make sure was very clear on the community outreach. We are better off for the community in this process. I don't want to jump ahead too much to our next presentation, but I will tell you that a majority of the recommendations you will see here today are different than the initial proposals. Over the course of the months and all the meetings and the hours of public comment and the hundreds of emails and the many, many 101 conversations, your committee is very pleased to bring you recommendations that are different than what they started off as, and that's because of that community outreach and the way that affected the process. And so this is what some of that community outreach looked like with the emails, posts on Facebook, flyers that were put out, and again, the principals also had some preference in what was put out with their individual schools in terms of personal connected phone calls, flyers, and meetings that were held at the school as well, too. That was all above and beyond what you see here.
Okay, so good afternoon. My name is Adam Cersei, Chief Facilities Management Officer for the School District. A lot of the content that you're gonna see in the next items is very data-rich, data-intensive. The Facilities Department, the School District provides, you know, the foundation for the discussion with the zoning committee, and it really all starts with the student enrollment projections. These are often a source of much discussion and, and debate, and so I wanted to just quickly kind of go through an overview of how they're formulated. All right, so starting off, you've got some students now, how many of those are gonna be with you next year? Sounds pretty rudimentary, but, you know, actually, we track at each individual school the average historical matriculation rate, how many third graders become fourth graders at Huffaker Elementary School versus how many third graders become fourth graders at Brown Elementary School, might be traditionally a slightly different ratio. And some, some school communities have different transitivity rates. Also, you'll see occasionally like an unexpected dip in student population at a school when, you know, there's no boundary change, and oftentimes that can be traced back to what's referred to as like a bubble. You know, sometimes unexpectedly, one or two or three classes in a row, or maybe 100 students, and then it kind of wanes back to its traditional 75 students or so. And so when those students pass out of elementary school, you'll see a slight dip, things like that. When you dive into the details, actually matter, especially at the elementary level. Forecasting incoming kindergarten students, obviously also a huge variable and factor, but much more difficult to wrap your, wrap your hands around. So we're looking at birth rates to Washoe County resident mothers five years prior to the given school year to even begin to forecast student generation trends. So that's just one other component to what goes into the enrollment projections, but then really most of the enrollment growth is a derivative of population growth. So we in the Facilities Department don't forecast population growth. We don't closely study and monitor regional zoning and residential growth trends. We rely on the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency and UNR Center for Regional Studies to do that, compile that information. Obviously, we're talking very closely with them and the local agencies, Reno, Sparks, Washoe County, but what we do is take the forecasted population growth and basically convert it into student generation. So again, similar to the matriculation rates being unique to individual schools, the same house in the South Meadows of Reno may generate on average a different number of students than the same house in Spanish Springs or Northwest Reno. So we have trend data on student generation rates by area, by housing type, and then we apply that to the actual population rate forecasts that we get from these other regional partners. So those are really the main ingredients. We put some finishing touches on it, just with close coordination with our internal administrative staff on where certain programs are, the trends and changes to certain programs in certain schools, of course, scrubbing the data with the principals and feedback, stuff like that, really digging deep and trying to make sure our projections are as precise as they possibly can be. Again, it's often scrutinized, these are some of the key variables used to make our decisions, but I wanted to take a moment to go through this because it is so important to the decisions that we're making. We feel this level of investment into the data is important. So these next couple of slides really all kind of depict the same information. Maybe tip one more ahead. They're all generally the same information. The first slide, on Slide 7, was the five-year new residential unit projection by elementary school zone. This one, Slide 8, is 10-year projection. You can see the individual elementary school zones, whether it's Brown, Pleasant Valley, Huffaker, and the numbers are the actual projected residential units within those elementary school zones, and then they're just color-coded by the numbers. Really what this is intended to convey, what we've been talking about, or what we talked about for months with the zoning committee, is the pending growth in the South Meadows, and really all of the South Truckee Meadows, not only in the South Meadows, but even in the Huffaker and also Hidden Valley elementary school zones. This is really sort of defining the problem, right? So obviously, this part of the solution to that problem is building new schools. If we could flip two more slides ahead to Slide 10. So this is the exact same data, just illustrated in bar graph format. You've got the five-year projections in blue, 10-year projections in red by elementary school zoning boundary. So you can draw some conclusions about where that growth is occurring and also mag, order of magnitude, right? You can see triple and quadruple the number of forecasted housing units in, you know, one elementary school zone versus some of the others. So again, consolidating that further on Slide 11 really brings into focus. This one, I think, really most well defines the problem. So you've got more than double the residential units between Pine and what's now known as Hur's Middle School, and then again, more than triple still beyond that between Hur's and DePoli. So it starts to put it into context. When we're building a new middle school in the South Truckee Meadows, that's a good thing, but when we started to talk about, okay, how best to populate that school, there was a conversation about, you know, what future growth in the South Meadows we needed to plan for and how best to utilize that space now and in the near future.
Thank you, Adam. We want to talk and touch just on a few kind of big items. These are things that regularly came to us as a committee from the community, questions about sixth grade moves to middle school. And it's important just to, to, to let you know that this is not the purview of the Zoning Advisory Committee, this is an administrative change that occurs. However, there are times in which we rely on knowing that information and making some of the recommendations to you. There are a variety of opportunities in this most recent growth for sixth grade students to now go to the middle school, and that's good news, given our overall plan, but that is something that we often hear about. We often hear about programs. We have lots of programs in our schools. We have instructional programs, we have two-way immersion programs, we have gifted and talented programs, we have lots of special education programs. Our committee does not choose where those programs are. Like sixth grade moves, that's an administrative function. There have been times when we've known that a program would move, and then we can use that space, but going into this, we don't like trade off programs in order to, to make boundary choices. Transportation, transportation is always a key issue. We work closely with Mr. Martin, he's always aware of what the sort of recommendations are for where, where we may draw some new boundaries. He begins to look at that information. We will not have final routing information for families until July, probably the middle of July, families will be notified right away of where their bus stops are. We follow the walk zones, but one important thing, and this really happened last year more so than this year, whenever there's a safety issue that's of concern, we will transport kids. So if there's a major arterial that's within the one and a quarter miles for an elementary walk zone, we will still transport to avoid that sort of a safety concern. I'm gonna have Ms. Smith talk a little bit about our committee principles and some guidance we received from our General Counsel.
Thanks, Paul. So the guiding principles of the committee that you see here are, they are North Stars. However, they are not in weighted order, so this is just a listing as you see it here. This does not necessarily reflect our order of priority. They are all equally as important to us, and we try to achieve as many of them as we can in each of the decisions that we make and the recommendations that we bring to you. So those are student safety, of course, which Paul talked about on a few different levels, maximizing educational equity, equality, and student achievement, maintain and keep operational existing school buildings. So in particular with that case, that means are we making sure to make zoning recommendations in a way that does not unnecessarily pull students away from existing buildings and making sure that we're making recommendations that bring balance to areas. Minimize disruption to families to the highest degree possible, that's something that you'll hear me talking about quite a bit as we get into our recommendations in the next section. Ensure our diverse student population has equitable access to schools and educational programming. So in our committee, that turns into the phrase neighborhood kids and neighborhood schools that you will hear quite frequently if you ever attend one of our meetings or listen to our transcripts, and we also refer to that as unifying neighborhoods. So that is the principle that we kind of bring down to neighborhood kids, to neighborhood schools, and unifying neighborhoods so that we're not creating any irregular boundaries. We are not carving neighborhoods out and moving them into some other area, so we are ensuring that equity. We also strive to maintain these zone changes for three to five years, and that's where the work of district staff with Mr. Cersei really comes in by allowing us these projections to make decisions and recommendations. That is not a one-year plan, or a two-year plan, or even a five-year plan. These are very long-term plans that our community can trust and know will come for their children now in school and then also children still to come through to our district for the long term. And that brings us to this. So I appreciate having Chief General Counsel Rombardo with us today, and we felt that this was important to bring to the Board of Trustees today. This year's committee year brought us to a place with stated and implied public engagement and comment that brought us to an area that brought race and socioeconomics more to the forefront than we had had in our first year as a committee, enough so that Chief General Counsel Rombardo, in our March meeting, attended and gave a refresher to our committee, which had been originally trained in the fall of 2017, but also for the benefit of the community. And we went over the Supreme Court's rulings on race and socioeconomics in zoning decisions to ensure that everyone understood the ways that it can and mostly cannot be considered in that way. And so this more or less means that we need to be making decisions that make sense, that do not pull neighborhoods out, that look exclusively based on maps, geography, address, things like that. The same is also true for all the different ways that our local communities live in homes. It does not matter if that home is rented, owned, what size it is, they are homes, they are all respected equally. And so you can see here that the teachings that we kind of boil down from Mr. Rombardo was it is not permissible to use a student assignment plan that relies on racial classifications in order to achieve racial balancing in schools. A plan is racially neutral if it determines student assignments based on home addresses and/or geographic boundaries, as long as the boundaries are not bizarre or highly irregular, which is something that we pay very close attention to, and we have been adjusting boundaries based on this guidance last year and going into this year as well, too.
So probably the, the most, most emotionally charged... So probably the most emotionally charged kind of question we received often for the last four months had to do with high school rezoning. There certainly was emotional comments and questions about what was going to happen to my elementary student or my middle school student. But really, it was, we were kind of okay with what you're planning in terms of your movement of kids from elementary to middle school, but what's going to happen to them in high school? We don't want them to be moved now, have new friends in middle school, and then move back and something of that sort occur. It's a reasonable question. It's something we need to really dig into. And our plan as a committee is to begin that work first thing in the fall. We have to step these things out. We're to a point now where we can begin to have those high school discussions. Some of the data is available, but we've been working with the Office of School Leadership, Dr. McNeil, and sort of working out some of the logistics. It's a bigger issue than some of the zoning issues, for example, or the variance issues that we see at the middle school and the elementary school level. This is a map of our high schools, and I'm just going to skip right over that and come over here. This is kind of part of the problem that Adam and his team and we are all trying to solve. So optimally, what we want to have happen is all the kids in one elementary school to go together to one middle school, to go together to one high school. And that isn't something that we've been able to do in the past. We've had, well, we've been cleaning up as much as possible, have been all of the elementary split feeders. You'll see some of those tonight. We have elementary schools where kids go three different directions. And then we have situations in which they go to middle school. And then from middle school, they go in multiple directions to high school. So we're doing our best to clean that up to the extent we can. And this, what we call spaghetti chart, tries to show that to an extent. With the numbers of middle schools and the numbers of high schools and the differences in geographic boundaries, we cannot do this in total. We will still have a handful of middle schools, at least based on our current building designs, that will remain split feeders. I think it's four out of the 16 that will be in play next year, including Pine, Dilworth. I believe Sky Ranch will open as a split feeder, and then Clayton Middle School. But this is part of what we're trying to solve. One of the reasons why we brought up the South Meadows heat maps and we bring this up is it seems as if our problem, or not our problem, but our real focus is around, and tonight, Marcy Hers. But that extends out across the district. So we're really trying to solve problems for the district as a whole. Marcy Hers is a great thing, and that provides us an opportunity to do that. But it's not just about that community. Rezoning variances. As you know, we talked about this last year, but this is another question that comes up often. So I'm a parent of a child, and they've attended an elementary school in their kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth grade year. And suddenly, they're supposed to go to a different elementary school for that fifth grade year. That family can opt to keep their child in fifth grade at the school that they've been attending. That's true of eighth graders as well. So if you're at that last grade in a level, we guarantee that particular variance. What we do, what we implemented this year, and we'll do it next year, I believe on the same timing, is we send out, we contact all the families right at the end of October, beginning in November. We provide them a form. We ask them to complete that and turn it into schools by the end of November. It's important to try to get a handle on the variances that we will have because that can affect our allocation decisions. All these things are interconnected. And so you have a picture of the form that is used on here as well. So that really kind of, that's the context. We are prepared, if you allow us to, to sort of walk you through a series of action steps. We kind of began the year where we left off last year. We were in Spanish Springs area, and we still had a little bit of work to do out in Spanish Springs. So we would like to start with that, and then we'll move through changes around Marcy Hers and then how that cascades out. We'll just say, if you have any questions before we get going, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
So about variances? So if a family has a student outside of that one year, if they would like to stay at the current school, they have to go through the district process, just like any other variance? The only variances that are guaranteed are in the last year, correct? Is that what you're saying?
That is true. And it's only for the first year that the new school or the new zone comes into play. If, for example, that fifth grader had a younger sibling, a second grader, I think space permitted, that variance would be granted. But that student would go through just the general variance process.
Is that a principal, that's a principal's decision based on all the collection of variances, requests they get?
For general variances, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Taylor, did you have a question?
No, I was going to ask you, Dr. Cottrell.
Got you, okay. Public comment?
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Duran. Nice to see you.
So you got my email?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so I do know, like, I heard this guy heard about, like, to try to be create a middle school, go to the one high school, why then go happy? Like, for example, if you were, like, if you were on a Brown student, go reason to Hers and then have to go back to Damone. So he created, like, created a limbia split feeder on the middle school to high school, which is 2021, but I thought, like, it's going to be on the cascade effect on Wild Creek High School, which, I don't know, it's very difficult on, because we, if you build a Wild Creek High School, we have to rezone a west of Sun Valley from Spanish Spring Out, Spanish Spring High School into a new school. I'm not going to happen for next year or 2021 or 2022. Or like, for example, like, they have to go on freshman, old campus hook high school and go to the new campus on 2022 and sophomore year. And I have a concern about, like, Pine Mills School being a split feeder school. I do know, like, King Valley, Dawson, and Dona Spring were being rezone to Damone Ranch High School. And Huffaker and Mistress, like, being a lone school for here Galena or Worcester. And I have concern about that Worcester High School. This is my neighborhood, near room, go to Smith Street, Pine, and then to Worcester, be a lone school. Feel like if one middle school have a space, why not rezone Smith Street to one middle school? And keep a pine activity program we made.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duran. And I think it might be worth mentioning the, anything related to Wild Creek is a ways off because we don't have that high school, you know, under construction yet. So that would not be in effect for the 2021 school year, and it probably wouldn't be in effect for the 2122 school year, correct?
In fact, we would probably begin high school rezoning in the Galena-Damone Ranch area. That might also take us into Worcester, perhaps Reno High School, just given the middle schools that have currently been affected. We also have Sepulveda, if you recall, was a split feeder, three ways. So we might have some minor boundary changes that we have to look at around Reed and Sparks High School and Spanish Springs High School. But just Wild Creek, that would probably come in the following year where we would begin that work so that it's ready to go once that school opens.
Okay. Any other public comment at this point?
Not for this item.
Okay, okay, great, all right. Are there board member questions? Vice President Raymond, no? Okay, other questions at this point? Okay, I do want to say that the community outreach was extremely impressive. And I am absolutely astonished at how much work was done to make sure that you were out in the community. And as you said, individual members of the zoning committee were meeting one-on-one with people. I can't imagine that more could have reasonably been done to do community outreach on this. So thank you for that. I also appreciate the guiding principles that you developed and their alignment with the board policy that we had for the zoning committee. So I know some of those things are very hard trade-offs. As you look at student safety, you also look at keeping neighborhoods together, and you keep it equitable access. And so I know it's been a difficult challenge of balancing and calibrating all of those various principles. So thank you for this great introduction. Okay, anything else on this? If not, we'll begin talking about 3.0.
We do have one comment.
I did want to say thank you so much for those comments. So earlier today, we did have Polly Boardman, who represents the trustee Zone B, I believe trustee Minetto. She was here earlier today. And I do know that quite a few members of the committee are watching the livestream today, so they are all getting your feedback directly. So thank you on behalf of them.
Great, you bet. Okay, then we will move on. And again, we have opened all of these items, but the first one of our items for possible action is consideration of approval of the recommendation of the zoning advisory committee to modify the attendance zone boundaries of Jesse Hall Elementary School and Alice Taylor Elementary School, moving a portion of students who attend Alice Taylor Elementary School to Jesse Hall Elementary School, effective for the 2021 school year. And again, that's an important part of this discussion. We are not talking about zoning changes that are going to be implemented in 1920. We're talking about 2021. Okay, go ahead.
So we'll start, excuse me, we'll start here with the map of, this is part of the Spanish Springs area. Just to orient you, the colors in the background, those are coordinated with middle school boundaries. So primarily, what you're seeing is the Shaw School boundary and that sort of blue color. The dark blue lines that seem to go along with roads, those demarcate the elementary school boundaries. So what you have to the left of the screen, you see Hall at the bottom-left corner, and you see a Hall zone that's kind of east, or I'm sorry, it's sort of west of the map, on the west side of the map. And you have the Spanish Springs, or I'm sorry, the Taylor Elementary School that is right to the north and east of Hall. And then you have Spanish Springs Elementary School. You have a part of that boundary, but not all of it. So what I'm going to ask you to do, and I don't have a pointer. I wish I had a pointer so I could sort of point at it a little bit. But you're going to see a zoning boundary change that's really going to take some students out of Taylor and into Hall. And that's just to the northeast of Eagle Canyon and Cala de la Plata. And I'll just toggle back and forth so you can see it. Do you see how the blue line is changing? Right, thank you.
Do we have, do we have a pointer we could get for, we don't have a pointer. We don't have a laser pointer anywhere in the school district?
They don't work on the screen.
Oh, they don't work on the screen, gotcha. Can you do it with your mouse? Can you point at something with the mouse? There you go.
It's hard to see it on the screen.
It is, but it's better than nothing. Yeah, okay. Yeah, it doesn't work on the screen. Thanks for trying, though.
So whereabouts JJ was hovering over with the mouse? So that, where she just put the mouse on, where that new dark blue line is, that's a long, like, a drainage ditch. So it's not splitting, like, one side of a street from another. There's actually a drainage ditch in there. And that's one of the things that Adam and his team has done really well, is always try to create boundaries where there's natural breaks so that we're not splitting a neighborhood up. This effectively would move about 150 students, based on our current projections, out of Taylor and into Hall. This is a blow-up of that particular map. And again, you can see the boundary up towards the top of the screen, going down that, like, ravine or that drainage ditch. This is the, probably, part of the information that's most important. If you look at Taylor, so on the top half, you have kind of the current enrollment projections. And on the bottom half, you have the enrollment projections based on this particular alternative. So if you look at Taylor, right, in 2021, they're expected to be at about 113% of maximum capacity. With this change, they would be at 93% of maximum capacity. By contrast, Hall, which starts at 70%, would increase to about 89%. So with this alternative, there's far more balance that's brought into the overall enrollment among these schools. You do see that Bow Hatch is still a little low, and I'm probably getting into the next slide. The growth around Bow Hatch is a little bit less certain. It could blow up a little quicker than we think. And so I think that weighed into the committee's decision. So I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Smith to talk about some of the alternatives.
Thank you, Paul. So as we can see from the map here, the blow-up, there are many different ways of going about this zoning. It's a growing area. And I appreciate you mentioning a very important element, which is the use of natural boundaries, major arterials, large areas like golf courses, things that make a clear delineation on a map when you're looking at it so that we are not breaking up neighborhoods as much as possible, again, in striving to keep neighborhood children that play with each other in the same schools. So as the committee reviewed these options, we are particularly lucky on the committee to have one of her own members is Jason Shipman. He is a member of our committee, and he is also the assistant principal at Taylor Elementary School. So of course, the entirety of the committee heard a lot of public comment. We received communication on this. But with Mr. Shipman actually being an educator at Taylor, was the first to champion the option that you see here, which is our recommended option A. And the guiding principle that this aligned to most strongly on behalf of Mr. Shipman and the committing was minimizing the disruption for the greatest number of students. So there are different ways of going about pulling in different neighborhoods, changing different areas. But the committee found that option A brought balance to the schools that was needed immediately and also brought minimal disruption to the other areas around. For example, you'll see with option B and C that we pull in much larger areas of the map. When you look at B through the rural areas, I realize you don't have those maps, but just kind of thinking through that, and then also rezoning additional portions. And so the committee did agree with Mr. Shipman and the positive public comment that we also received endorsing A. And we did feel that this addressed the opportunity that we have for overcrowding, balance, and minimizing the disruptions to the largest number of families in that area.
Questions? Yes, Vice President Raymond.
Can you remind me that on the slide with the enrollment projections, the blue line is when sixth grades moved to, or when something, I can't remember the blue line? After 2019, 2020?
The blue line is just when these changes would go into effect.
Okay, and the black line between 23, 24, 24, 25 is?
The five-year projection. But there will be, you will see some differences. We'll try to orient you at each table because there are some differences in how the tables are.
Thank you, I thought I remembered something from another one.
The, sorry, Adam Cersei, for the record. The red line is when Sky Ranch Middle School is scheduled to open. So you see major overcrowding relief between current and the 1920 school year. The blue line is the opening of Bow Hatch. So it also coincides with the timing of these proposed adjustments. But basically, in the existing table on the top of that slide, you can see the impacts of both of those schools as they're affected. And then you can see, you know, hey, despite the opening of these two new schools, we still have some minor overcrowding to attempt to relieve. And then that's where we're talking about this rezone.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this?
Not for this item.
Okay. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak about this item? The rezoning of Alice Taylor and Jesse Hall Elementary? Is there anyone here who would like to speak on that? Okay. Yes, Mr. Cottrell.
Yeah, thank you. As a trustee that represents Spanish Springs area, I just want to thank you for your, for your work. I haven't received a single email or phone call from anyone in Spanish Springs with concern, so I hope that means that you nailed it. Hall and Taylor do get evened out by this change, and I know there's some uncertainty. do get evened out by, by this change. And I know there's some uncertainty around the growth in the Spanish Springs, Van Gorder, and Bow Hatch areas. So I do support this. I feel that this is the, the best option for Spanish Springs at this time. So again, thank you very much for, for your work.
Thank you very much, trustee Cottrell.
Would you like to make that motion, trustee Cottrell?
Sure, if we're ready to do so.
I think we are. We have no public comment and no further questions.
All right. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the zoning advisory committee to modify the attendance zone boundaries of Alice Taylor Elementary School and Jesse Hall Elementary School, moving a portion of students to attend Jesse Hall Elementary School to Alice Taylor Elementary School. Is that right? I think it's backwards. Okay, should I start over?
Yes. Oh, good catch.
Okay. That would be, that would be a problem.
That would be a problem.
All right, let's start over. I move that the, I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the zoning advisory committee to modify the attendance zone boundaries of Alice Taylor Elementary School and Jesse Hall Elementary School, moving a portion of students to attend Alice Taylor Elementary School to Jesse Hall Elementary School, effective for the 2020-21 school year.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by trustee Minneto. And just a point of clarification, the agenda was posted correctly, but we had the motion written wrong. So thank you for catching that, trustee Cottrell.
I got very confused on these items.
No, that's okay. That's all right. Is there any further, uh, did we get a second? Oh, Minneto. Yes, okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we'll move on after a little glitch.
You're ready for more.
That's right. No, no, no. Okay. We'll move on to item 3.05, which is already open. Consideration of approval of the recommendation of the zoning advisory committee to establish the attendance zone boundary for Marcy Hers Middle School, and modify the attendance zone boundaries of Kendall DePoli Middle School and Edward L. Pine Middle School, moving students who attend Ted Hunsberger Elementary School, Elizabeth Lenz Elementary School, Pleasant Valley Elementary School, and a portion of students who attend Brown Elementary School to Marcy Hers Middle School, effective for the 2021 school year. All right, Dr. Lamarcus.
Okay. So this first map that we're showing you, what it includes is the, the current area for Pine Middle School, which is kind of in this tan, sort of light tan section from the middle, all the way down to the bottom left. It encompasses Huff Acre, Lenz, Hunsberger Elementary Schools. To the right, in the darker tan, you have the zoning boundary for DePoli Middle School. And as we had mentioned in the beginning, that is one of our areas that we are trying to find some relief. Up in the kind of right corner, in the sort of mauve color, you have, I believe that's the Vaughn Boundary. And in the green section, you have the Swope Boundary. So all of those sections will be recommended for some change. Here, what you see now is the proposal, and it's called Alternative E, because this went through several different iterations. And I think Ms. Smith will talk more to that in a moment. Initially, back in February, the, the recommendation from staff was to move Lenz, Hunsberger, and Pleasant Valley to, at that time, the new middle school in Arrow Creek. It's now Marcy Hers, and I'll try to refer to it as Marcy Hers. You build habits and you call it Arrow Creek long enough, it's hard to break. So now in this kind of olive color that you see, it looks like olive on mine, not so much on the screen up there. Now what you see is Lenz and Hunsberger, which were approved way back in February by the zoning advisory committee, but Pleasant Valley wasn't. So we went back and forth with some community input, and finally, in April, came back with option E, or Alternative E. And so in addition to Hunsberger and Lenz, Alternative E does add Pleasant Valley into Marcy Hers Middle School, which you see on the map. It also adds into Marcy Hers a portion of students that currently attend Brown Elementary School. So in the original recommendation, there was always the plan to move Brown Elementary School into Marcy Hers. However, the thought at the time was to wait until another elementary school had been built in the South Meadows, which we'll refer to as Rio Wrangler, because that's the area that is designated for that build. Actually, I'm going to, no, I haven't. I got two slides in my pack. So this is a blow up of the area around Brown, Brown Elementary School. And it can be a little deceiving, so I want to walk you through it. So where you see Rio Wrangler Parkway, that area, which would go into the DePoli Zone, that I want you to know is still a part of the Brown Elementary School zone. So in this particular situation, we're actually creating a split feeder for a temporary period of time. That was based on some community input, that it was better to make that move now than to wait. So anticipating the boundary for Rio Wrangler, it was felt that we ought to move now the students in sort of the lower half of Brown over into Marcy Hers Middle School as part of this recommendation. So again, this does do something that typically we don't attempt to do. It creates a temporary split feeder.
When you say, excuse me, Paul, when you say lower half, is that everything within that blue line?
Everything to the
The south of that.
The south of that blue line, right.
Wow.
Which we expect to be the zone for Brown, once Rio Wrangler is built. But that, of course, is several years out.
Wow, okay.
Sorry, Madam President. Will you show that? Use the mouse and show that a little bit? I think it was up there and I lost it a little bit. That lower part there?
That's the part that would go to Marcy Hers now. And then right above it, where it says Rio Wrangler, that is still part of the Brown Elementary Boundary now, but that would go to DePoli. That would continue to go to DePoli.
Until?
Until the Rio Wrangler site is built.
Okay.
Mr. Cottrell?
So the Rio Wrangler's Elementary School, was that approved by the board last year? Or is it still, hasn't been approved yet? It's just an expectation? I haven't heard about that school discussed before. So I'm just asking.
Great, great question. Adam Cersei, for the record, the school, the school board has taken action on an agreement with the landowner to acquire the property. That's as far as we've taken it at this point. It's really need dependent. But we do own the property, and when the need arises, we'll be able to mobilize the construction. So basically, no, we haven't taken that to you at this time, but we own the property.
Vice President Raymond?
I just have a comment, because I got confused. I use Google Satellite a lot to help with this process. And I got really confused. I finally went and drove out there, because on Google Satellite, there are no homes shown, where there are now many homes. And I don't know how often Google Satellite is updated, but in my view, there's, there's nothing where these lines are. But then I went out and drove around, and there's a whole bunch of houses there. So that helped me. I don't know. I just got a comment.
And there's some very high-density parts of that area. So we've got the potential for lots of enrollment from that. Okay. Okay. Do, do you want to keep going on this one? And do you have, you have more? Yeah, let's get through this, and then we'll have public comment.
Just another couple of slides. So here, what you have are the enrollment projections. Here's the impact data. And really, what I would draw your attention to is on the second part of the, the table, DePoli and Arrow Creek. So after the red line, so the, the implementation or, or Marcy Hers opening, you see that DePoli would drop to 68% versus 96% in the year previous, 2019, 20. And Marcy Hers would open at 70%. We also see, I, I believe the green line is sort of guessing at when Rio Wrangler would be implemented. And so you see the changes to Brown and to Puliquitas at that time.
And now this, oh, go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. On that green line, with it being 2025, 26, if, if more homes are being built quicker than we anticipate, that green line can shift a year or two. Couldn't it, like, couldn't we, couldn't the Rio Wrangler potentially open in 23, 24, or 24, 2025, if things change on the ground?
That's absolutely correct, yes.
Action on this item would assume then that no one from Huff Acre goes to Marcy Hers. And I think we need to talk about that a little bit. Part of it, part, I would love for you all to explain your thinking on that, because we have had many, many emails about that. And I think part of the challenge is that we don't know for sure where those Huff Acre families would go to high school, because we haven't had that discussion yet. And to, to have Huff Acre families go to Marcy Hers and then go to Galena is a pretty long, a long trip for high school. So I just want to give you all an opportunity to talk about that, because I just wanted to clarify, this isn't just about those schools that are on that agenda item. It does impact others. So maybe you can give us a little background on that.
I sure can. So here we have our options. It's really important to point out that we evaluated much more than the five options that you see here. What you see before you were the final set of options that the committee considered. In the months where we discussed this, it's fair to say we reviewed dozens and dozens of options, many of which were shown to the community, and some of which were reviewed more privately, but they had to meet a certain standard of feasibility to be brought to the committee and the public. So again.
And Mrs. Smith, maybe you could just touch on, how did the committee define feasibility? Or what was feasible versus not feasible?
With our guiding principles. So for example, we generally do not consider areas where we would be jumping across major thoroughfares and not take the whole area around it. So we don't carve out, we don't jump across and grab areas that might want to be considered, but then create kind of like a diagonal area. So there has to be a certain geographical logic, if you will, when you're looking at a map, even without the narrative of one of us walking you through it. And so based on that, we considered certain things. Now, as it affects directly with Huff Acre, we did consider many, many options, which did include Huff Acre in the Hers Middle School zoning. So that community was definitely heard and was very present in the conversations. However, I will say, though, that at the end, the committee did feel, though, with the heat maps and the projections for both areas of South Reno on both sides of South Virginia, which is an area I'm very, very familiar with, it has tremendous population growth. Of course, the district staff does their very best to forecast it. It could certainly be higher than what they're forecasting. They felt that this was a reasonable, if not slightly conservative view. We appreciated that. To us in this committee, it felt like Hers Middle School truly needed to serve the South Reno area, to which it was largely based. Now, we do understand that Huff Acre is very close to that area. However, it does fall outside of that. And there was enough of a need in the areas in the schools that we have directly in the South Reno area. We also felt that based on mapping and distance, that Pine Middle School offered a very suitable and strong educational option that was much closer to that school, that being Huff Acre Elementary. With that said, we understand and we are very keen on the fact that we're making decisions on middle schools without the second high school component. That was the charge of our committee this year. We've tried to recognize it many, many times. And we have told the committee and the community that we will be taking this up first thing in the new committee year. So your point is very well taken about the uncertainty of high school. Unfortunately, I can't answer that at this moment, but I can assure you, it is very much top of mind for us. And the same equity that we would be bringing to the middle school recommendations, we promised to make to the community for the high school recommendations as well, too.
And can you walk us through the, the logic of Huff Acre not continuing to go to Swope?
In this case, we would be removing through all these recommendations that you see in front of you, not just this one, but moving on through all of them. We will actually be removing all permanent split feeder situations for the entire district. In this case, it would be the sole area neighborhood that the district would allow, assuming you pass the other recommendations that you see before you tonight. And again, all elementary school split feeders would be resolved. The exception, of course, and we'll talk more about Brown, is a strategic, short-term split feeder that that school community does support. Again, that is not a long-term or permanent split feeder. That is just a short-term decision, which preemptively identifies to those families on either side of where the Rio Wrangler Elementary School is likely to be built, and allows them the continuity through DePoli Middle School and Money Ranch High School, without moving them twice, if you will. So we felt that that was an important strategic move, and it is supported, as far as we know, by a majority of the families that have reached out to us. So again, specifically with Swope being a split feeder for Huff Acre, with our action with removing all split feeders from elementary schools to middle school, that would have been the remaining one. I will also point out that our later recommendations and other actions are dependent upon this move. We cannot address multiple split feeder schools. We have elementary schools going to three different middle schools down in that area of town near Swope, many other elementary schools, which would be forced to maintain their split feeding scenarios if we do not pass this recommendation. So in this case, this is a series of dominos that all have to fall together. Otherwise, they, they don't. So hopefully, that explains, again, many different thoughts and preferences and feelings on this, all of which are welcome and appreciated. But these are the series of facts and objectives that the committee ultimately felt was the strongest.
And then the relationship between those, I think it's 143 homes in Huff Acre, and the Pleasant Valley decision. Maybe, can we talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. So we can walk through this map a little bit more with what we ultimately decided. So this is a prime example of a final recommendation varying very differently from where we started. Again, a great example of the community comment, the people that came to the meetings, the 101 meetings that we have. We ended up in a very, very different place from where we started. Thanks very much to district staff, and also to the community for being so open and vocal, and that brought us to our best place. So with that said, we'll go ahead and we'll start going clockwise, and we'll look at the decision around Brown. So of course, we were just talking about removing permanent split feeders, and yet here we are creating a strategic, short-term split feeder. Through this process, the district, of course, has always had access to the land for Rio Wrangler Elementary School, but it had not quite moved to that next step in the process. It was over the course of these months that Mr. Cersei came to the committee and said, based on their heat maps and the projections, that it seemed like a more nearer term project, with a potential opening anywhere between the 2023 school year and the 2025, again, pending other decisions in the future. But the heat maps do suggest that, to trustee Kelly's point. So based on that, we heard very loud and clear that the Brown communities and the Pleasant Valley communities felt very interconnected. There's quite a few variances from both of those schools. And another element, which was very important, is that, I will tell you very honestly, that we were considering a bunch of these different alternatives, and it was the Brown families who initially came to us and said, and I believe personally, rightfully so, that this made sense to them. They liked the idea of moving and starting Hers. They understood the plan with Rio Wrangler Elementary School opening, that they may move into Hers at a later date, but they wanted the opportunity to be a part of that school on day one. And that is a very powerful opportunity for our school community. You are moving along with other schools, other students, and you're creating the spirit and the culture of a school from day one. And they very much wanted to be a part of that, as opposed to be plugging, be plugged into an equation later on. This plan also is sensitive to the fact that some Brown Elementary School students may be rezoned for that new Rio Wrangler Elementary School. And rather than taking all of Brown and moving them, and then taking that one slice, and then moving them again back, why not just keep them where we are? So that's what we decided to do with the split feeder. So again, I think it's very important to point out that the So again, I think it's very important to point out that the Brown community was the first one that actually raised their hand and said that they supported E. And also, committee member Christina Pearson is a family, is a parent who attends Brown, met with the principal, met with the parent population. Again, still several different opinions on this, but more or less mostly positive. We actually took the time to do a reconfirmation vote in our May meeting, which we just had earlier this month. And it was unanimously passed by the committee and all of the public comment that was there that night was to reaffirm this decision. And so that's where that came from. Now, moving down over to Pleasant Valley, we definitely have heard from them. I think we may also hear from some families that we really appreciate. Along the process, that Pleasant Valley has been moved here and there over the course of the years. And I hear that loud and clear. And it's the truth, quite frankly. It is the truth. When we look at a map, however, and we look at where they are situated in conjunction to Marcy Hers Middle School, we do actually believe that this does align with our guiding principles. It brings that Brown community together with the Pleasant Valley community. It maintains that continuity in reference to the South Reno area and brings them up onto that side up to Marcy Hers Middle School. We do recognize that there was an interest from some parents to stay at Dipoli and then also Damone Ranch. But again, in that case, we would be creating some diagonals here that I'm not really sure are very supported by geographic logic, if you will. And I do sincerely believe, and I said this in our own committee meetings, that this is a long-term plan for Pleasant Valley. I understand their hesitation to be moved again and their deep concern about high school as well. But this committee does feel that with the presentations we've had from the district and from what we've been told, that this is a true long-term plan for them. And we do know that there is support with Pleasant Valley. Maybe some families would have liked to have stayed through the Damone Ranch and Dipoli cycle, but this is truly a good long-term plan for them, based on our guiding principles. Again, with that said, recognizing that some families may feel differently, but we do believe that this would be the long-term plan for them. And we do plan to tackle the high school zoning as soon as we can in the fall. So that, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a question. I was kind of curious about what the Brown community felt about the transportation. I mean, looking at the map, you know, that southern part of the Brown Elementary Zone would have to be crossing a couple of major arterials like Virginia Street, for instance, to get to Marcy Hers. So was there any concern about transportation? Does the school district think that there's more busing available for students to get them safely to the school?
Yeah, I think we can say confidently that busing will be provided and that will not be a problem. I do not recall receiving any public comment either at the meetings or via email that really addressed the transportation issue. You are bringing up an important issue. In this particular scenario, we would be crossing two major arterials, but busing would be provided.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chairperson Smith. Just a question, the conversation you just talked about in terms of Pleasant Valley and some of the desire to continue with the Dipoli, Damone Ranch route, from the committee standpoint, can you talk a little, what was the committee vote on that after going to, I know you considered it fully, I believe you did. Can you share that with us a little bit?
We did. We had, we had many options, all of which included Pleasant Valley. So we had many options that we discussed outside of public meetings that did evaluate the impact that Pleasant Valley had on Hers. However, all of the options that were shown in our public committee meetings all included Pleasant Valley. We do believe and have from the start that Pleasant Valley is a natural feeder into Hers based on its geography and also its distance to the middle school. And we are and have been sensitive to the fact that they have been moved around many times over the years. But we do believe that this is a long-term plan for the school. Also, if we did not move Pleasant Valley, so let's, let's say we didn't, because we considered that as well too, then taking Brown also doesn't make sense because we wouldn't create a diagonal. That just, that doesn't meet our standard of logic with geography. And then let's say we pushed it down the line to when the Rio Wrangler school moved, then that could potentially deprive them from the opportunity to start at Hers right from the start and delay what may be an inevitable move, rather than give them the opportunity to open the school on day one, which we did hear from many parents was important to them, on the Pleasant Valley side and also on the Brown side. So I hope that answers your question, that we did sincerely consider all of the options, but we had to meet a level of logic in terms of enrollment and geography.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, let's keep going.
I really believe that concludes our general discussion of this item. Ms. Smith has walked through the alternatives, and so the recommendation is really alternative E.
Public comment? J.J.?
Candace Lowry.
Ms. Lowry, welcome.
Hi, Candace Lowry. I have four students in Washoe County, two at Pleasant Valley, one at Dipoli, and one at Damone Ranch. Definitely against option E. I appreciate all the work that these guys have put into this process, but I do not feel like it was transparent. As you saw in all these slides, Pleasant Valley was never considered to stay at Dipoli and Damone Ranch. We came, I came to every meeting they had, and every meeting I personally asked to see numbers. What if we stayed? What does this look like? Every time, it never came back. It actually was a motion one time, and we still did not receive those answers. Maybe they met in private, but this is supposed to be a transparent, and I have said the whole time, show me the numbers. If I'm wrong, I'll sit down and be quiet. So it's frustrating to me, and especially, you said earlier, 20% of a school, that's a big number. Pleasant Valley has 144 variances. And I do disagree with Ms. Smith when she says they're from what we call Baby Brown. Baby Browners don't want to be at Pleasant Valley because they're in walking distance to Brown. We have variances from Double Diamonds and the other side, the people who are going to be the Rio Wranglers, because there's no room. And guess what? Both of these schools are still going to be over 98% capacity, so they're still going to be looking for a new home, a place where their kids aren't overcrowded, and they're coming to Pleasant Valley. It makes sense to leave us aligned where our variance kids and the ones who are going to keep coming to us because there's no room at Polakitis, that's 96, at Brown because they're at 98. Leave us, we're already aligned. You don't have to make a change next year. My, definitely would love to stay aligned. If you're going to pass this, I want to stay aligned. We want an immediate change to Galena High School if you pass this. The other question that I have is for our athletes. My daughter is a student athlete and she will be in her sophomore year. So it's a big difference to her whether or not, if she gets rezoned to Galena. She just spent two years of her high school earning a spot on a varsity team to get rezoned to a new school. So, and then, or she stays and if she's on a variance, maybe can't compete at the varsity level. That's frustrating to me. I mean, she's like, Mom, I'm planning to get a scholarship. What am I going to do? So if that is what's going to happen, I would ask for preemptive variances to the school that she would eventually be zoned to, so she can earn her right on the varsity team where she's going to end up. The other, we've mentioned this before, is currently my students travel on a bus to Veterans Parkway to school to go to Dipoli and Damone Ranch. They will be crossing major arteries to go the other way. Dipoli and Hers is .2 difference, miles difference. It's not a lot. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lowry. Ms. Smith, Dr. Lamarcus, would you like to respond to any of that?
Sure. Would you like to respond? You want me to respond?
Please.
Okay. I appreciate the comments. We have heard this. The, there was some question about the capacity at Galena to take all the students that would be zoned for Marcy Hers. Again, we have not begun the high school rezoning work. We will begin that in principle in September, October at the latest. But what we know based on the data that's been provided to us is that there is plenty of space for that shift to occur. We just are not prepared to make that recommendation for you tonight. Pleasant Valley remaining where it is was analyzed. It was not brought to the committee because it was not deemed to be feasible. We rely on the administrative team to bring to the committee those options that they can reasonably take action on. As Ms. Smith mentioned, I don't remember the exact number. I know Mr. Baxley provided me a couple of numbers. I think he's went through 47 up to 80 iterations of different scenarios. And we would have been lost in a sea of data to look at all of those, especially since many of those were not feasible. Not feasible for some of the reasons Smith mentioned, also because of impact data. So it wouldn't have made the difference that it needed to make in terms of relieving Dipoli. That would be my response. We do understand that with any of these changes, one of our principles is to minimize disruption of families. It doesn't say, don't disrupt families, because with any of these changes, we are going to disrupt families. We're going to disrupt the patterns of where their children go to school. And that's a hard thing. As a parent, I want to know where my child is going. I have trust in the school where my child goes. And I'm going to be very concerned if you tell me that you're going to change where my child goes to school. That's the hard reality. That's part of why we were talking, that we have a big problem to solve, and it's not just a single community. It's a district-wide problem. That's why we're bringing these difficult recommendations to you.
Two questions I have. One is the enrollment chart, which if you go back up a couple, J.J., doesn't include that, nope, down one, yeah, nope, in between, there you go, doesn't include Pleasant Valley. So what's the information about Pleasant Valley is question number one. And then just, you know, why couldn't Pleasant Valley remain on the trajectory they've been on?
I'll give that a shot. My name, Adam Cersei, for the record. So as far as this is, this slide is concerned, Pleasant Valley is not explicitly identified on here because they're not seeing any change per se, right? The elementary school boundary associated with Pleasant Valley is not changing. They're merely being rezoned into Arrow Creek from Dipoli. So the impacts associated with that rezone buried within the data associated with Dipoli and Arrow Creek is what's displayed there. The reasons that Brown, Polakitis, and Rio Wrangler are itemized on that second chart is because their enrollment boundaries are being adjusted, are proposed to be adjusted. Same as Dipoli and Arrow Creek's actual enrollment boundaries are being proposed to be adjusted.
So just to clarify, the numbers would be the same for Pleasant Valley regardless of what the...
That's a simpler way to put it. If Pleasant Valley was on there, their projected enrollment numbers would remain the same. There is a case of variances that we discussed at numerous meetings. Students that are on variance to Pleasant Valley from Double Diamond and from Brown, who are zoned for Double Diamond and Brown, there are a significant number of those. What those students do when, for instance, Polakitis is opened and overcrowding at those schools wanes considerably, do they go back to their zoned schools? Do they remain on variance at Pleasant Valley because they've established relationships, et cetera? That's very difficult to predict, specifically that type of human behavior. But all told, and really this segues into the other point that I wanted to make, right? So we talked a lot about geographically, why it didn't have a strong logical case to rezone or to leave Pleasant Valley and Dipoli when we had an opportunity to rezone them into Arrow Creek. But, and we talked about all of the dozens of possible combinations of all these different variables and really tried to back it out of the weeds and go back to those regional growth kind of heat maps and those bar graphs that I showed that really emphasized the primary driver of all of this is the growth in the South Meadows area. And so that by leaving Pleasant Valley Elementary School zoned for Dipoli resulted in Dipoli going over capacity in the near term in any scenario. And we can talk about, you know, by not rezoning Pleasant Valley into Arrow Creek Middle School, that left Arrow Creek Middle School arguably underpopulated. And then we looked at possibly, you know, populating Arrow Creek Middle School at that time with Huffaker. But in that scenario, Pleasant, then Dipoli goes over capacity. All right, if you don't, if you didn't rezone Pleasant Valley out of Dipoli, then Dipoli ends up going over capacity in, you know, say 2025 or in the near future. And then you look to relieve Dipoli at that time. Most likely candidate then is Pleasant Valley to Arrow Creek. Then Arrow Creek becomes overcrowded because it's already been populated with Huffaker. So it was, it was a, you know, not a iterative conversation essentially, where we looked at all these variables, but at almost every turn, we ran into that growth factor in the South Meadows. That Dipoli, the Dipoli enrollment zone is growing with population and students very rapidly and expected to continue to do so for some time, and that we needed to plan for that certainty.
Here's, here's a challenge that I have with that. The folks that are in Pleasant Valley are already there. They are already counted in Dipoli. And so we're talking about moving them out to allow for new people who are going to move into the area. And I, you know, that's hard. I know it's hard for the committee members to deal with. The same thing would be true, because right now, so, so they're not adding to what's happening at Dipoli. It's future residents who would be driving Dipoli going over capacity. And if we, and I'm, you know, I have not made up my mind on all of this because I'm trying to listen to all, you know, to all of the dimensions of this. If Pleasant Valley went to Dipoli, then there's room for Huffaker to go to Hers if that's an option that those folks want. Similarly, when there's growth that happens on the other side, we're saying that the Marcy Hers Middle School would get too overpopulated, would get too crowded if we had Pleasant Valley and Huffaker there. But it's getting overcrowded because of new residents coming in. And I, I just have, you know, it's challenging. These are people that are already here and, and yet they're being, they're being forced to move because of new growth that will occur that isn't there yet. And I understand the dilemma for the committee. You're trying to balance all of this. So just throwing that out. I don't know if any other trustees have comments?
If I may, there, Ms. Lowry in particular has been really a fantastic voice. The committee really appreciates what she shared. She actually educated us on the history of Pleasant Valley being moved to different areas, and we do appreciate that. There is support, though, for this change. Also with pulling Huffaker into Marcy Hers, it would severely underutilize Pine. That is a different action item for us to discuss with you. So we have to look at how, all of how you drop something here and then the ripples that they have all around. And so the point that I'm making is that we did sincerely review dozens and dozens of options. And the one that you see in front of you now, we do feel brings a long-term balance that does represent and respect the fact that families are making huge moves. And we do respect that very much. Most of the feedback that we've got is less concern about moving to Hers and more concern about there really needs to be a follow-up as soon as possible with the realignment to Galena, which is an action that we're not allowed to take at this time, but we do hear loud and clear. Anyways, I share that so that you understand how all of these things came together with our decision.
Can you talk a little bit about the impact on athletics? I think that was a, you know, that's a real concern for kids that are on a path.
Let me touch on that. It's a real issue. The issue Ms. Lowry brings up is a real issue. High school athletics is, it's a big thing. It's not just a thing, it's a big thing. And it is true. If you are in a, in a high school and you establish varsity eligibility and then you go on variance to another school, you will be asked to sit out for a full year. So that's something that can't happen in this scenario, all right? So we are, we are having NIAA right now review some of the logistics that we feel we've put together that are sound. So when a change would occur, and let's say we have a sophomore who, who's been at one school and now they're expected to go to a different school, that student would be allowed to make a choice at that point in time to remain in what they call their school of origin or to go to the school in which they're being rezoned. At that juncture, they would, they would be eligible to, for varsity athletics, either at their school of origin or at the new school. The issue is they can only... The issue is they can only make that choice once. They can't choose to go to Reno from McQueen and then it not work out, and two months later say, "Well, wait, I want to go back to that one." It was my origin school. That can't happen. So it is a big issue, and that's part of the reason why we have to kind of, we want to aggressively and quickly get to that, but we don't, we want to have answers to the questions when we get there. And this is a key issue, and it is being reviewed by NIAA right now under the direction of Mr. Stallworth, our athletics director, and we believe that'll come back. Another thing I would mention is, if you remember last year, we made some changes, I believe Milton and Westergaard, that were going to go into effect 1920. And while we had some families that were just about to start kindergarten, and they're like, "So wait, you want us to go to Westergaard for kindergarten, and then in first grades you're moving us over?" Space permitted, we worked with the schools, we're providing those variances to those families. So we are trying to do the high school work so that it syncs up very nicely with the middle school work. So as a student exits middle school, they're going to know which high school is their zoned school. If we have a student that's sort of an in-betweener, the scenario that was raised, we would hope, and we think with space permitting it, which should occur, the high schools will take those variances ahead of time. Now, that's a principal decision, it's part of our policy, but it is a decision they would want to make because these students are going to be athletes in their school, they're going to be scholars in their school, they're going to be zoned in their school in just a couple of years.
Did you want to speak, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President, just because I represent us on the NIAA board. And I think that, you know, this isn't the first, it's new for us. It isn't new for, you know, many other counties in the state in terms of how they deal with that. And so I'm new on that board, but I would think that that's a conversation that's been had. And the idea is not to deny students' opportunities. So I would think that we'd have, you know, a conversation to look at what's been done in the past. This is just coming up again. I'm new. I've been to one meeting so far, so I don't know what our past has been, but I know Mr. Stallworth does. And so I'm cautiously optimistic that there are some things that can be done to not interrupt that play because it's critically important that once you get started to stay on that track. You've been in that program, under that head coach, and it's critically important. And those on that board are people that generally have somewhat of an athletics background and understand that. So I'm cautiously optimistic that something would be able to be done to allow for that.
Dr. Taylor, do you know what the timeline is for that decision?
I have, I do not, again, I've been to one meeting. But I'll reach out tomorrow, but it won't help much. But I will reach out tomorrow to get an idea of what it...
Or staff can.
What it looks like, okay. Just because I know that's important, that's critically important. And again, the goal there is to make sure there are some policies and to make sure people don't cheat with variances and so on, that we aren't talking about a cheating situation. That's a little different. Not that people cheat with variances. No, that's hypothetical.
That's right.
Yes.
But those are important decisions, and we recognize that, you know, this has to do with our students' college opportunities, and so it's a big, big deal. Yes, Vice President Raymond? Oh, too many.
Okay, thank you. I think, just to add sort of a perspective, I guess, that I'm struggling with, that I have been with all of these zoning considerations, is attempting for myself to kind of differentiate between what I know to be very real and very valid and understandable kind of emotional concerns over these moves that have to do with individual families and their logistics involved with students in different schools and kind of a history even. You know, we've heard from some parents about that they bought a house because they went to a certain school and they want their kids to go to a certain school. And I identify with those concerns and emotions. And I struggle then to balance that with my role as a trustee and having to make decisions really thinking about our whole district. And this is an example of that where, you know, and really they all are examples of how I am struggling with this, that I want to make the right decision for our whole district. And I think I go back to the work that the committee's done. I know how, you know, as you've illustrated, how much time you've spent and how many of these variations you've looked at. And I appreciate the challenge that we have as a district in planning and preparing for the growth that is coming. I mean, as I pointed out on this Google satellite, there are no houses on this huge swath of land in South Reno where there are now houses. So I think the growth is happening. And I certainly understand President Simon Holland's argument that we're talking about moving families that are already in a school to a different school. But I think one of the struggles I've also had in this is there are clearly some pockets of our district that just don't fit really neatly. And I think unfortunately Pleasant Valley is one of those. And I think unfortunately Huffacre is one where it's not, you know, it's not in a location that, there are these clear lines for me that I do see options for where the zoning goes. And so I'm not declaring anything, I guess, other than to say that this is hard and that I recognize, and having a child myself and picking a house because I wanted her to go to certain schools, I recognize how hard, I think I would be completely torn up to find out that that would be changing. But that's not why I'm sitting here today. I think I have to make that separation a bit for my role as a trustee, I think, so. One thing I would like to ask and see what the appetite from the board would be is, I see these all being so linked, and I feel a little uneasy about going down the line with them and making decisions that can't be reversed later if we hear some other piece. And so I'm just, I'm not sure what our options are to move on to other agenda items before voting on this one.
Well, we certainly can. Trustee Caudill?
That was exactly what I was going to say. Since we've opened up all the items and they, all the actions go into the next action, we can't move forward. If we deny this action, we can't move forward. So it might be helpful to hear the whole thing and then go back and do all the actions one by one.
Well, and we could certainly do that on this particular item. We don't have to decide at this moment.
So I don't know if anyone, if everybody else will find that helpful or not.
Yeah, I think, well, that was the purpose for our opening them all at once, so, okay. If there's not a motion, oh, we have another public comment. Thank you.
Pablo Nava Duran?
I'd like to, I know it's a very difficult situation for Pleasant Valley and Brown, Bushida Brown had to be rezoned to Marcy Hers. And then after next year, they're going to be rezoned to Galena High School. That might hurt on New World, like we had to rezon to Hoozer or Damani. And like my sister wanted to, you know, I like, my sister wanted to graduate from Galena High School. But with moving on Pleasant Valley and Brown, in a very difficult situation, she will not tend to Galena High School in the foreseeable future and go to a different high school. Like I'm a Galena High grad, I'm from the New World. We try all the way, me and Huffacre parent will try all the way to Galena High School. I feel, I know, like I heard Huffacre parent wanted to go Marcy Hers, and I feel like I want to go Marcy Hers, but no, maybe I stick to Pine because it's a lot closer. And I know, like, there on the heat map, I know there are too many houses built in South Reno. And I do support a term in E for having opportunity for baby Brown to go to Hers Middle School rather than five year in a world that create a school culture right from a start. And I know Huffacre was disappointed, and I go to Marcy Hers, they go to Pine Middle School. And I'm also disappointed too, but I'm staying Pine. My neighbor was there Pine. I tell, like, we're going to find a reason out of Galena, make sure we have a space for Pleasant Valley Billy Brown. I'd like to make a clear tag, please vote on option E because there are a lot of houses on our apartments what by a Sabrina and Steamwell Parkway, as a middlely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duran. Okay, so I, oh, there's another one. Okay, thank you.
Madison Lowry?
Welcome, Ms. Lowry.
Thank you. First, I just want to say I know how hard you guys work, and I have no idea how hard this job is. It's just too crazy to even imagine how hard you guys are working for this. Like, there's too many schools. I would not want to be doing what you guys are doing. With that being said, I am a sophomore, 10th grader at Damani High School. My mother spoke earlier. I have three younger sisters, two in elementary school, one in middle school. And I started out in Pleasant Valley, and now I'm at Damani. I know that it's hard to remember us at Pleasant Valley. We are so tiny, like just a speck in all these crazy numbers that you guys have to deal with. But throughout this, just try to keep in your mind, try to remember us that we are, when you take away the variances, there's only 276 kids in that school. And that's 46 per year that would go into a school. So how important is it that we move schools? How much does those 46 kids matter? And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well said. Okay, I believe there's an appetite to move on and then come back on this one since it has so many tentacles into other things.
It may end up making sense to go through the two next action items as those two are particularly linked, but they do cascade from this. So I understand what you're asking for. So in the third action, really, I'll just summarize this. By, if Hunsberger and Lenz were to be placed into Marcy Hers, that leaves, that takes a lot of students out of Pine Middle School. So this next action item was really around kind of the refilling of Pine Middle School.
And this is on the agenda. It's item 3.06.
Right. You have here the current boundary, and you have these boxes that we'll get to in a minute. But first, if you see Huffacre again, and it's assumed to be zoned for Pine in this particular picture, you have Hidden Valley over to the sort of upper right. It's zoned for Vaughn. You have Donner Springs, which is down kind of in the bottom right. And Donner Springs is a split feeder. If you look carefully, it's kind of, it's hard to, I'm going to get up for a second. This is the Donner Springs zone. And so you see it's split feeding to three middle schools. We've got some kids going to DePoli, we have some kids going to Vaughn, we have some kids going to Pine. Dodson, which is right above it, it's actually split feeding as well. You have the majority of kids going to Vaughn, but you have a little chunk of kids that are going to Pine. Over here at Huffacre, you have that split. You see some of the green and then some of the tan. So you have a split feeder there where you have kids going both to Pine Middle School and to Swope Middle School, okay? And that's just to kind of orient you. It's a part of what we're trying to solve here, and that is to eliminate split feeders. If you kind of, let's start with the yellow box up at the top. It says Hidden Valley to Corbett, and then we'll kind of, I want to deal with that one first, then we'll go to Collin Ranch to Huffacre. So you do have two elementary changes that are on this board. Hidden Valley was not part of an original proposal to move into Pine. That is something that came to us through lots of community input. It makes sense. Geographically, it makes sense. When you think of where our airport is, and then you think of where Hidden Valley is placed, it's actually far quicker for the majority of people living in the Hidden Valley area to get to Pine Middle School than over to Vaughn Middle School. But that's aided significantly by a boundary change. And so, and you'll see in a moment when I go to the next slide, that there's a chunk of Hidden Valley students that we would move to Corbett. Then we would take Hidden Valley and move it all into Pine. With Collin Ranch and Huffacre, so part of what the recommendation you're going to see is to move all of Huffacre into Pine. There is a very small, well, it's not that small. There's about 70 students there. There's a, I think they're townhomes, it's sort of an apartment complex area. I know you've received some emails regarding it. It sits on the east side of a golf course, and it's currently within the Collin Ranch area. Collin Ranch is at capacity. There's a need to relieve it. And so there's a natural break there with the golf course. And so there's a recommendation to move a small chunk of kids from Collin Ranch to Huffacre. So then you see, essentially what you're going to see, I'm going to switch to the next slide. We would make those changes. Right up here, that's the Corbett, Hidden Valley change. And then you saw the Collin Ranch to Huffacre change. And then the primary recommendation is to move all of Dodson into Pine Middle School, all of Donner Springs into Pine Middle School, all of Huffacre into Pine Middle School, and all of Hidden Valley into Pine Middle School.
I don't know, Dr. Taylor, your expression is echoing what I'm seeing on my screen. There's a, there's a big bar across our, yeah. It's not, it's not producing the, oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Hey, we froze too.
Okay, we're all on the same page.
Would you like me to start over?
No, no, that's okay. No, it was just in the alternative F.
Okay.
Yeah. Would it be possible to do the flicker back and forth?
Yeah. So here are the boxes again. And so you're going to see changes up in the sort of north-right quadrant between Corbett and Hidden Valley, and then a small change there between Collin Ranch and Huffacre. And then you're going to see the colors associated with Donner Springs down sort of to the right. That's all going to become tan. All of Dodson's going to become tan. All of Huffacre's going to become tan as well as Hidden Valley. So I'll go back and forth. I'll try to go slowly. That's now. That's the recommendation. Now... Yes. The tan color becomes Pine.
The colors are middle school.
Colors are middle school. The elementaries are bounded by the dark blue.
Gotcha. And we did have quite a few emails from folks who were in that little pocket that were going to Collin and would now be rezoned Huffacre that are in some high-density multifamily, and maybe you could speak to that. Aspen Ridge Apartments in particular.
Yes, and Lake Ridge Living as well. So there's two neighborhoods right in that area. I'd be happy to speak on that. Collin Ranch is my own. Yes, and Lake Ridge Living as well. So there's two neighborhoods right in that area. I'd be happy to speak on that. Collin Ranch is my own school community. As we look at this plan, I think Dr. Lamarcia put up the numbers. If we could go to that slide, you'll see that Collin Ranch is reaching an overcrowding situation. Huffaker is in an environment and a population which would allow for some additional students. This area is unique and was brought to us by district staff for a few different reasons. Never of which was it ever considered the type of home that was in these neighborhoods. We look at them as exclusively as neighborhood neighborhoods where families live. But these areas do present some unique opportunities for consideration to Huffaker. Particularly with Lake Ridge Living, which is the first neighborhood as you turn onto Plumas. That is a single apartment complex shared with the complex on the other side of the street. So it is, it's the exact same apartment complex. It's split in half by a road. The apartments and the families that live right across the street go to Huffaker. The apartments that live on the other side of the street go to Collin. Directly next door to them is Aspen Ridge, another neighborhood. They also go to Collin. The people across the street and the complex that is now further down the road also goes to Collin. These two areas are also set apart by the geography of the golf course. And that does remove them from any other continuity to other Collin-zoned areas. So I have a map, a close-up of it if we can. I know it's hard to see.
Is there a way to zoom that, JJ? Don't know. There might be. Might be a way to zoom that. And then maybe Paul, you could point to what we're looking at.
But the point in clarifying that is that this is a big change for those families. We respect and understand the concerns that they would have and the change that this would be to them. We do, however, feel though that their distance from Huffaker, particularly being right across the road from the other Huffaker areas, it's approximately 0.4 miles from these neighborhoods to Huffaker Elementary. They would be walkers as opposed to about a three-mile bus ride up to Collin. So just a matter of a distance and being aware of that. But again, the primary driver is that they're not contingent in other Collin zones. They are across the street or directly next door to other Huffaker neighborhoods. And in the one case with Lake Ridge Living, it is exactly the same apartment complex. It just happens to be split with a road down the middle of it. None of that minimizes that this is a tremendous change for these families, families that I know, that I see in the hallway of my own school. With that said, we do believe that the geography of it and the walkability of it and its direct connection within its own neighborhood to the Huffaker-zoned area does make it a suitable candidate for our recommendation.
Okay. And and I don't want to assume that I know these folks' full intentions and concerns, but I I I expect that some of it has to do with then Huffaker being zoned to Pine as opposed to them going to Swope, which they their families traditionally have done.
Yes, and I can also speak on that too with the Huffaker zoning to Pine. So this will bring us back a bit to the Title IX guidance and training that we got from Chief Counsel Rombardo. The committee did feel that its distance, it being Huffaker, its distance to Pine as opposed to Marcy Hurst, its geographic location. And also what we understand to be an excellent school environment at Pine. We understand outside of race and socioeconomic, that this is a successful school in its own right. And it is made that way through its administrators and all of the student populations that it draws from, not just the select number of students that go there now. So based on what was presented to the committee, again, geographic mapping, minimizing impact to students, we did feel strongly and have brought you a recommendation that puts all of Huffaker to Pine Middle School.
Okay, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Just for for our own information. You talked about why you chose those areas, like the the two apartments that are basically the same, but that kind of you talked about why there those why that was a great fit. Can you talk a little bit why it wouldn't make sense to have pulled from a different part? Or one of the one of the other parts that are still in green there? Does that make, if that question makes sense?
Yes, it does. So district staff brought us this original recommendation. But I'm more than happy to explain that directly behind that area is the entirety of a Lake Ridge Golf Course. Beyond that, as you go further behind that area, I, you're going up McCarran at this point.
Up McCarran, okay.
So there's a huge natural break. And these two areas are effectively islands. So there really wouldn't be anything to take until you get much further up McCarran. These maps don't necessarily reflect that, but the geography of that area is very clear with the swath of land that's actually there. And that's the golf course, the golf buildings. Then you continue to go all the way up McCarran and then you would get into the gated neighborhood of Lake Ridge.
Lake Ridge shores.
Correct, correct. And so no other areas were quite so reasonably positioned. Again, being across the street indirectly next door to Huffaker areas. So we did review other areas. It did come up with another committee member. But again, at that point, we would start carving out and trading, which is not something that we generally endorse.
I I understand. Thank you.
So the only thing I'd add, and we're blowing up right now, so it's in your pocket, is this does take Collin Ranch down from about full capacity, 98% capacity to around 87% capacity. So that was part of the reason for that change as well. It's a significant rationale for it. Also increases, you know Huffaker, but not to a point where if there's a problem in terms of utilization. I'm wondering if you'd like me to go on to the next section or if you want to sit here for a minute and talk?
Vice President Raymond, did you want to make a comment?
Oh, sorry. I didn't realize that was on, but I will. To me, this area, I know this area near Lake Ridge really well, and it, I believe it makes very good sense. I talked with one parent that mentioned, and I don't know, you know, how true this is, but that there are a number of kids in that apartment complex that is split that have variances to go to Huffaker that are zoned for Collin just because it is closer. It's actually walkable, which I think is great. I mean, it it, to me, this does make a lot of sense. And I think the real probably, again, speculating. But I think that their concern isn't about that elementary school boundary as much as the change from Huffaker for that area being zoned for Swope versus Pine. And, you know, I will just say now that I I think that that move makes sense to me. I think the entirety of Huffaker going to Pine is a reasonable move. I think that I've spent some time looking at the Nevada Report Card. And Swope and Pine are almost identical in their ratings. And I'm I gather that there's an argument that that would change, but I think that that doesn't calculate for me. I think that the principals and teachers are at Pine are what make Pine a great school. And then and the families, and there are great families that go to Pine. Pine's a great school. And I think it kind of, to me, goes back to what I said earlier and the emotion. And you you bought a house because of a zone and and I think that is so hard. And I would be in their shoes if it were me. But sitting here and looking at this, you know, I think it is very reasonable and I believe makes sense for all of Huffaker to stay together and to go to Pine Middle School. And I think that the boundaries for Hidden Valley, I like that move. And so I I guess I would just say personally, I'm in support of, which one are we on? Action three.
Other comments or questions at this point? This this is a this is a tough one. This is a tough one because we've had, I think we've had the most emails about about this. People have really strong feelings. I want to echo Vice President Raymond's comments that Pine is an outstanding school. It was our middle school of the year for the Washoe County School District. And there are great things being done at Pine. So I I don't want to have anyone walk away from this feeling that, you know, we we don't admire and respect and congratulate both Pine and Swope for being great middle schools. Yeah. Public comment, please, JJ.
Pablo Nava, Duran.
Okay, so only no Huffaker parent here today. I guess Huffaker will get along together. I'm being rezoned to Pine. So I know like Huffaker on the south side were very difficult. Had been rezoned to Pine. I know Swope was an acid school based on the rating. Pine do have an acid school. But Huffaker, Lynn, but being rezoned to Arrow Creek, I'm not sure that will affect way or not, but I feel like Huffaker make a try, I could make sense to go Pine rather than go Hurst. And then I know like Smith Ridge and Huffaker was being zoned for Galena. I know Huffaker want to go to Marcy Hurst. But I think stay Pine, reason from Swope to Pine. And hopefully at high school, the question about rezoning this two elementary school out of Galena High School and to where someone else closer to them. And I do realize I went to Donner Springs and I live in Donner Springs area like my my for most friends like sped up, go to Vaughn, and then you had to go to Pine and go to Galena High School. That's very weird. So I live Donner Springs. I used to live Donner Springs area and I live near World. Don't forget about the about the Corbett. There's been this fear be Pine and Vaughn. And I know I hear about Hidden Valley, they wanted to go to Pine and to do Vaughn because Vaughn about to take over at the state. And so that makes sense. Hidden Valley go to Pine. And that makes sense. Upper Lorda, Hidden Valley will go to Corbett. Make sure that makes sense. So what do you hear about state takeover? I never heard before.
We will comment when you're finished, Mr. Duran.
Okay. And I know like on the 2.7, we're coming out on the near World neighborhood, which is my neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Kristen or anyone, do you want to comment on the question about takeover by the state? Thank you, Dr. McNeil.
Absolutely. I believe what public comment is referring to is for our CSI, for our comprehensive school improvement for Vaughn Middle School. And any one-star school would be under our CSI. And it's not a takeover. It's actually more support for the school. And we have several schools with CSI for one star.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Yes, Vice President Raymond.
I just forgot I was going to also talk a little bit about, I mean, I think, I hope that the community understands too how much time and work outside of today's meeting that our board has put into preparing for this and and going through a lot of this. And I spend a lot of time in particular looking at Huffaker because it is zoned in my area. Although it's funny because it's shared with trustee Kelly, the school is in my zone, but most of the people that live the south part are in his area. But I wanted to give personally a lot of consideration to the possibility of Huffaker going to Hurst because that was what we were hearing early on. And so I I looked closely at that and I really felt like for me, it it not only went against kind of some of those guiding principles of the committee, but I looked back to even as a candidate for this position, running at the same time that WC1 was on the ballot and talking about the goal of building these schools is to keep kids from riding buses for long distances, getting up early in the morning to go to a middle school way across town. And I couldn't make Huffaker work for Hurst. I couldn't find a way where the students, especially on the north side of McCarran that are zoned for Huffaker, that we're not just doing kind of the reverse to those students that that we were unfortunately having to do for students at Huffaker, at Huntsburger and Lenz to go to Pine. And so I just don't see the fit there for Huffaker to go to Hurst personally. I, that's why I feel comfortable with this Pine. Action three, so sorry.
And do we need to talk a little bit more about Huffaker to Swope?
I can either jump ahead or I can just make a couple of comments. Part of what happens with moving all of Huffaker to Pine and relieving Swope is enabling a couple of the sixth-grade feeders, Anderson and Beck, to go to Swope. It also, and this is, that's not an action. But another important action that we will come to has to do with Mount Rose Elementary School. And so in trying to clean up sort of the split feeder that is Mount Rose and Libby Booth, you will, we will get to a point where we're trying to move some kids from Mount Rose over to Libby Booth, over to veterans, and then drawing a hard boundary with Mount Rose so that all of Mount Rose goes to Swope. That doesn't add more kids into Swope, but it this is part of kind of the tentacles that move out. So we do need to get to a point where we are relieving Mount Rose. And that that's just kind of down the road with this.
I know every single one of these moves affects so many other things. I don't know if board members are prepared to act on this one. I I think the suggestion of moving forward and hearing the rest of the presentation and then coming back is probably a good one. And looks, I'm seeing a lot of nodding. So let's go ahead and keep moving.
Okay. So this is action four. Approval of the recommendations from the zoning advisory committee to modify the zoning boundaries of Roger Corbett Elementary School, Edwin S. Dodson Elementary School, Echo Loder Elementary School, Smith Ridge Elementary School, Edward Pine Middle School, Eos Vaughn Middle School, moving a portion of students who attend Roger Corbett Elementary School to Smith Ridge, a portion of students who attend Dodson to Roger Corbett, a portion of students who attend Smith Ridge Elementary to move to Dodson Elementary, and a portion of students who attend Smith Ridge to move to Echo Loder. And then a portion of students who attend Edward Pine to move to Otis Vaughn Middle School. So this is the current boundary. Now, this is assuming the change where we've kind of established the the Pine boundary that would include all of Huffaker, all of Hidden Valley, all of Dodson, all of Donner Springs. And really, part of the the focus of this action is to really clean up this middle portion. You see these jagged lines that look a little bit like an EKG, although I don't know why I want that particular EKG. But you you see some white space where it doesn't seem like it should be white space. And you see some mauve kind of go out. Originally, there was some thought in trying to move some of the students from the Smith Ridge area into Huffaker because Huffaker had space. But through public comment, through some safety concerns with Virginia Street, we moved away from that particular that particular option. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to jump ahead to the next slide and then kind of let it speak for itself. It's got a bunch of these call-out boxes, and I think that'll be helpful to you. Okay, so let's just start, let's actually start with the elementary schools as opposed to the middle schools. So if if you go up to kind of center, top, Corbett to Smith Ridge. So when you look at the farthest south portion of the So when you look at the farthest south portion of the Corbett area, the recommendation is to move those kids to Smith Ridge. If you then move clockwise and go to Dodson, there's a plan to move some kids that go to Dodson over into the Corbett zone. And then if you go down, you see just a small chunk of kids, I believe that's airway. That road is airway, just a small group of students that are actually in the Dodson zone would move to Smith Ridge. And then if you keep coming down, you have a chunk of Smith Ridge kids that we would now push over to Dodson. And then all the way down to the left, we've got a chunk of Smith Ridge students that we would put into Loder Elementary School. In doing this, we would also want to avoid a couple of split feeders that are in there. So we would just be moving a chunk, two chunks of students that currently attend Pine into Vaughn Middle School. So right now Corbett is a split feeder where some kids go to Pine, some kids go to Vaughn. All of Corbett would now go to Vaughn. And I believe the other one is Dodson, is that right? Yes, there's a group of kids right now that are at Dodson that go to Pine. And in fact, we just wanted that change. We put everyone into Pine. But because we would rezone those students into Corbett, they would now also move into Vaughn. So this is really kind of almost in, back in the day, we would call pocket rezoning. There's just little shifts that make a lot of sense. We're trying to keep this community in the Neil Road area whole. And right now it's kind of split right down the middle. So this one actually, I think we feel like makes a lot of sense.
And the pink is Vaughn?
Pink is Vaughn. Tan is Pine. And green is Swope.
Gotcha, okay. Yes, Ms. Smith?
So this is another great example of a huge evolution from where we started to where we were. There were a lot of different schools and options considered here. And we were particularly sensitive to what we viewed as unusual zoning patterns. We were also sensitive to the fact that the Neil Road neighborhood was being split three different ways into three different elementary schools. And in keeping with our goal to keep neighborhood children in neighborhood schools, we wanted to review that and understand why this one very established area is being split in such an irregular way. And this opportunity came to us from the district staff. So the option that you see here in map, I think it's the slide after this one. Paul, the one that shows the clean version, there you go. Exactly. So this clean version represents major thoroughways, eastmints, areas where there is no residences to again create cleaner lines in a way that does not create too much disruption on the population basis or the balancing with the schools. But again, maintains the sanctity of that Neil Road area and reconsider's where the children are going to elementary school to again eliminate that highly irregular triple-feeding area that they had. If you look at some of the other alternatives that were considered in the most recent meeting, the ones that we ultimately turned down, you can see that there were some significant flaws in each of them, including busing students across Virginia Street over to Huffaker. We never, as a committee, thought that it made sense to pull some of these families over into Huffaker. Again, we're trying to apply logic here, the same is true. We never felt that that was a fit. So we really don't believe that those areas should be pulled over to the Huffaker zone at that point. And then L continues that three-way split of the Neil Road neighborhood, which we feel is an unreasonable burden for that close-knit community and was also not suitable to the committee. So that is the J recommendation that we are bringing to the board, which does again apply geography, logic, minimal disruption to the smallest number of families, and also keeps whole, a tight and established neighborhood.
Questions or comments from board members? Okay, public comment?
Pablo Nava Duran.
Okay, the deal is, Mr. Duran, you have to say something new that you haven't said before.
Okay. So I'm here about the New World area being split between Corbett, Dodson, and Smith Ridge. So we try to, we know like this New World area were being, all of New World area were being zoned for Pine, but there have been split period a middle school. And we tried like to rezone all the kids on the New World to Smith Ridge. And to Pine, they didn't go to Galena High School, which is a high school about to change soon. For out of President Valley and push up Browns. For sure. I heard on a, on a high school discussion, it said like, Miss Ridge will be a lone school to Russo High School. Maybe why not like, I know like Hidden Valley were being, wanted to go Pine Middle School. So they're being rezoned to Pine, Vaughn have a space. So I feel like if a community wanted to go and move Miss Ridge to Russo High School, then rezone all those Miss Rides into Vaughn. That will balance with on Vaughn, like being one-star school into two or three-stars. We start school increasing school performance. And keep it community, keep it a community like neighborhood school, better social status. If you pass it on original one on J, keep it Smith Ridge at Pine. And then I recommend like not to go the reason to Russo unless if the another Pine for a message school wanted to grow a rooster, and I'm fine with that. And I heard the original one is about, it's about like, so I heard on the west side, on the Smith Ridge, there being reason to Lorda and to Vaughn. I know like walking this street to Smith Ridge, walking to to Pine. I feel like there's a requirement to add a bus to this kid to go Lorda to avoid crossing Moana and Kiski. And to Vaughn, same thing, and Moana, Kiski plus the Palm Lane. And I'm gonna have to say, I support for all of the Corbett on the south side, Moana, to rezone to Smith Ridge. And I heard the zoning community will work very, very hard. I know the New World rezone, it is very difficult to rezone because it's a large density area.
It is.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. Okay.
Would you like me to move on?
I think so, yep.
Okay. I think it makes sense too because now we're really getting into the elementary rezones. So action five, approval of the recommendations from the zoning advisory committee to modify the boundaries of Libby Booth, Mount Rose, Veterans Memorial, Archie Clayton Middle School, Fred Trainer Middle School, and Otis Vaughn Middle School. We would do this by moving a portion of students to attend Mount Rose to Libby Booth, a portion of students to attend Mount Rose to Veterans, and a portion of students from Clayton, and a portion of students from Fred Trainer to Otis Vaughn. We're actually gonna take that just in the opposite sort of pattern. So if you look in the center of the screen, you have Booth Elementary, and you can see it's split feeding. You can see it's sort of southern area is in that mauve color, so it's going to Vaughn. You have the green area is actually going to Trainer. Talking about very few students, but it's going to Trainer. And you have this little blue area in kind of the left, upper-left quadrant, that goes to Clayton.
Wow, that's a long way. From Libby Booth.
Yeah, so this is Booth Elementary. Well, right in the middle.
The star at the bottom.
Right. So you see that kids from Booth right now are going to three different middle schools. And so the first part of this motion is essentially just to eliminate that. So to take the few kids that are going to Trainer, the Booth kids that go to Trainer, and the Booth kids that go to Clayton, and to move those kids to Vaughn. Okay? So, and now if you, well, there's some impact data, but we can look at that if you'd like. The next part of the change is now look at Mount Rose.
That's a weird.
Yes, it is a very weird boundary. It crosses a major arterial, that's Virginia Street. And you also see though that it's a split feeder. So again, you have the same pattern. You have the green Swope, you have the mauve Vaughn, and you have the blue, that's Clayton. So in this particular scenario, what is being recommended is to take those kids that are on the east side, so I'm looking at the top half of the map, but the kids that are on the east side of Virginia Street and move a portion of those kids over into Booth, two portions of those kids over into Booth Elementary School. And then if you go further down south, still kids living on the east side of Virginia Street but zoned for Mount Rose, we're recommending they be moved to Veterans Memorial Elementary School. And then what that would result in is all of Mount Rose going into Swope. All of Booth and Veterans already going into Vaughn. So we can look at the impact data. These are minor impacts relative to some of the other bigger ones, but that's that action in a nutshell. So again, it's the elimination of two major split feeders. It impacts like six schools.
Wow. Yes, Ms. Smith?
If you can go to the impact data, in this case, the committee believes that the maps and the numbers are very supportive of this. So you can see that Mount Rose is a very unique situation. It is not capable of being expanded. It's connected with neighborhoods all around it. So this posed a unique issue for us. But we do believe that by changing the zoning that you see in front of you, again, we bring logic from a geographic standpoint, we bring much-needed relief, and we also relieve them from the unusual burden of being split into so many different ways as a school community into the middle school cycle.
And of course, they're K8 now, Mount Rose, and very desirable and people wanting to have variances into Mount Rose because of the two-way immersion program. Trustee Cotto?
Yeah, thank you. Looking at the Mount Rose, the numbers, it's still, the percentage capacity is still quite high. Was there any discussion to try to get them more relief? Or is the committee feel like this will be fine compared, I guess, where they are now?
So we did talk about that. So we are very pleased that we are bringing the numbers down to what you see here. However, when we looked at other areas of the neighborhood zoned for Mount Rose, we felt that it began to split areas of the neighborhood that became very difficult to break up. And so for this step here, we felt that this was a solid option for the Board of Trustees. Again, it doesn't bring it down to something that's perfectly within the range of population that we like to see, but it is a big improvement. I know that the district staff has looked at opportunities for Mount Rose, but based on the way that it's built and its use right now, there are not too many options. But for this opportunity that we have in front of us, this was the only option that we felt was feasible, outside of starting to carve into other very direct neighborhoods and making changes in that way.
Let me add just briefly that we would love, if we could bring it down even further. But what we have done is brought it below what would be a trigger for year-round school. And it's not a building that can support year-round, but we are at least well under that limit at this point in time. So that, we do know that the school can be utilized well at this level.
And any input from principal? Have we heard from the principal at Mount Rose?
I've heard directly from her, no complaints about these questions and very supportive of the work of the committee.
Okay. Did you want to say something, Mr. Cersei?
I would just point out, in addition to the small campus size, the small maximum capacity of Mount Rose makes the percentages just very sensitive. So, you know, going from 130 to 111, you're talking about 75 students there. It's just, it, sometimes when you look at it on these, these charts can appear worse than it is, I think. So I just wanted to point out this overall small size and relative sensitivity of those enrollment fluctuations at Mount Rose.
And as you have said, just not possible to expand in any way. There's no parking, it's right in the middle of a neighborhood where there's just nothing to do. Vice President Raymond?
Just had a question about the Veterans, Mount Rose line move there. I know Veterans is a walking school. Does moving that line to Holcomb, from Wells over to Holcomb, does that impact those walkers? I imagine not, that's a small distance still. But Wells is a little more heavily trafficked.
That's a good question.
And, and it sort of reminds me actually of that weird little arm of Mount Rose that shoots over into like Old Southwest. I think that's probably Nixon Street that it runs down from Arlington where it jogs over.
Probably, yeah.
Was that considered, so those are two questions, sorry. One, the Veterans line, and will that impact walkers? But two, was, is that line the jog from Arlington over there for a reason?
It's probably Sharon or something.
I'll take a stab at that really quick.
No, it's not Sharon because it's, yes, yeah.
You know, the adjustment of the Veterans boundary over to Virginia Street certainly wouldn't cause those students to be outside of the walk zone, walking across Wells. There's numerous traffic signals and safe crosswalks, opportunities to cross Wells relatively. A lot of complete streets improvements have been done to Wells. So I mean, I would speculate that there would be ample, safe opportunities for those rezone students to continue to walk or to walk to Veterans. And this, this realignment, just my two cents there. As far as that little jog on Mount Rose off of Arlington, it is rather curious. Do not know why it was drawn that way many, many years ago. I would however just throw out there that, you know, realigning that back onto Arlington, right, puts more students into Beck, which is already overcapacity in and of itself. So that gets back to kind of what Beth said, that there's just relatively few options beyond what we've presented here to tweak or improve the enrollment numbers for Mount Rose.
Thank you. I think I know the history. I'm not proposing that we change it. I don't think Beck can fit, there's a lot of kids in that area. And, and I know that they are very supportive of Mount Rose and being there. I'm not proposing that we make any changes today, obviously. But it just is, when we're talking about these lines and things, that one stood out to me because Arlington is a very, that's like five lanes right there. And I've seen kids cross and, but I don't know why I'm bringing it up.
No, it's a good thing to bring up. It's something that we talked about as well. Again, going back to our guiding principles, we want to create minimal disruption to families. And so we felt that with this option, we were able to achieve a very suitable recommendation to the board that did bring a reasonable amount of relief to Mount Rose but didn't overly affect families that don't really have a place to go. And then now we start involving Beck, and then things trickle from there. So to Mr. Cersei's comment, we did evaluate that, but we did find that this option brought us to a successful place with minimal disruption.
Yes, Mr. Cotto?
And just to clarify, there's no appetite for Mount Rose to go to the more traditional K5 and then six to eight go into a middle school? Does it confirm that?
I do not think there's an appetite for that. The middle school program is an application program at Mount Rose. It's, so it's not following the same sort of boundary rules.
And it was also a national blue ribbon school this year, so we don't want to mess.
I would confirm that as well.
Yes, thank you. Yep, no, good to ask the questions, good to ask the questions.
We asked the same question. We asked the same question.
Okay, we've been sitting for almost two and a half hours. We have one more to get through. I'm thinking that we might take a break after this next one before we come back and do our voting, just to give everybody a little stretch break. Does that sound like a good plan? Okay, all right, let's go through our next item.
This one is probably the least controversial and the easiest item, we think, but hopefully you may too. So this approval of the zoning advisory committee recommendation to modify zoning boundaries at Clayton Middle School, Swope Middle School, and Hunter Lake Elementary School. Here, again, what we're doing is we're just cleaning up a split feeder. So if you see Hunter Lake sort of in the center towards the bottom, and you see, most of it's in a green area, but then above the green, you see some in a blue below the dark blue line. That blue is going to Clayton. So we are just simply recommending moving those kids to Swope, which is made in part possible by the relief that we have.
From Huffaker.
Yeah. So they all do kind of fit together, but this is the last action. This one has pretty small impact in terms of data, but there is some impact.
I don't have much to add. We feel that this is relatively straightforward, but again, it's important to point out that it is only possible through previous actions taken earlier in the agenda.
And we're, when we look at the enrollment projections, the chart of the enrollment projections, where is the expected expansion of Swope or the remodel of Swope, and how does that affect these projections?
So we touched on that earlier, just tangentially with the bonding presentation earlier tonight. Essentially, it's not taken into account in these projections because it hasn't been something that's been officially acted on. We also did not include in this presentation, the relief that is proposed to Swope allows us to bring up sixth graders from two of Swope's elementary school feeders. Anderson and Beck are the most overcrowded. They're both over 100% capacity currently. And with the recommended actions, provides enough relief to Swope for Swope to bring up the sixth graders from those feeder schools only. It doesn't provide enough relief to Swope, like as in the case of Pine and Vaughn, where we're able to provide enough relief to those schools that they are then able to bring up all of the sixth graders from their feeders, or the sixth graders from all of their feeders. Swope, the actions that have been presented here tonight only provide enough relief to Swope to bring up sixth graders from two of their feeders. So that's where the potential expansion of Swope comes into consideration. Another way of looking at that is that if we did not provide this much relief to Swope, not only could we, we would likely have to expand, physically expand Swope to a greater degree to be able to bring up all the sixth graders from all of Swope's feeders.
Which may not be physically possible, so.
It would certainly be more expensive.
Phew, okay. Boy, I don't know about you all, but my brain is reminds me of the old Far Side cartoon where the kid's in science class and he says, "Mr. Brown, can I be excused? My brain is full." President Raymond?
I don't know. I couldn't save this for after. I'll just say it. I, we talked a little bit about the split feeder thing, and when I consider this last change and the impact for the students that have been going to Hunter Lake, but then to Clayton, this to me is one of those times where it really illustrates to me the importance of of keeping kids together when possible. And I know we're not supposed to look at neighborhoods and demographics, but I know that area, and I know that the kids, you know, that are going to Clayton are living in a much different environment than the kids that are going to Swope, and taking, you know, a class of students that maybe, or a group of students in a class that maybe already feel different and not part of the group in some form, and I'm speculating, but then keeping them together, just, I really like it. I'm not saying this very eloquently, but to me, this is the example where it illustrates why I think it's important to keep elementary schools from splitting into different areas, because what I think the better way to say it is where that was happening, it was based on these lines where, and it was moving kids, you know, away from other students that, you know, were living in different parts of different neighborhoods. Sorry, I'm still not saying it right. I guess I did need a break.
We enriched the diversity of Swope by doing this.
Well, it's not even so much that as that I, you know, I think keeping an elementary, a group of elementary school students is powerful, and I think for me, this example illustrates it because I think that line is based on something other than geography to me when I look at it. And so I like that those students that were zoned for Clayton are now part of Swope.
The committee agrees with that as well, too. We found the existing zoning to fall under what we would call irregular. And we do feel that using the natural line of Fourth Street creates clear geographic logic in alignment with Chief General Counsel Rimbardo's guidance.
Okay. And then just again, to go back, so I'm clear in my mind and can, you know, explain all these decisions. So Swope is, Swope would not be able to accommodate the movement of sixth graders from some of its feeder schools if we did not give it some relief. The relief that is proposed for Swope comes from some small adjustments, but from Huffaker being moved to Pine. The move of Huffaker to Pine rebalances Pine based on some of the other actions that are taken. The part of Huffaker that has been most vocal is, I think, 143, is it 143 students? That are in that little pocket, something like that. And I think their objection has been, how do those 143 students make such a big difference that we can't go to Swope? So I just wanted to, I wanted to be able to have you all address that.
Well, I think part of the answer to that question is the elimination of a split feeder. A desire to, you know, rather than, you know, an alternative might be to modify the elementary school boundaries and bring that neighborhood that's part of Huffaker into Collin Ranch and Swope, or Beck and Swope, or Anderson and Swope. That's not physically feasible. So a desire to eliminate a split feeder that exists on, you know, irregular existing boundary zones. And then, you know, whether it's 143 or, you know, precisely what the number is varies from year to year. I thought it was actually slightly greater than that, maybe even, but we are, that's a significant number of students. And, you know, I don't know if I articulated it well, but it's, it's a, I think for lack of a better phrase, a delicate balance between all of these different variables. We talked about how this dominoes from this relief to the elevation of sixth graders relieving other schools, and then our active work contemplating an expansion of Swope, and that changes to that forecasted plan could result in many millions of dollars of additional capital construction to provide that capacity if, you know, different choices are made in zoning. And it's not to, you know, really pressure one direction or another here, but these are the entirety of the variables that are flowing into this decision-making process. So, you know, another point to make about this particular rezone, and this is, a lot of this stuff, you know, we spend a lot of time in these zoning meetings looking at Google imagery and talking with specific members who are like intimately familiar with these roads and neighborhoods, because not all of us are in every area of the, of the community. Most of the area that's in Huffaker that's zoned for Swope is kind of one way in, one way out. It's like one big dead-end street up there. And they all have to come down to effectively Lakeside, Plumas or Lakeside, which is a half, right across the street from Huffaker. So then talking about just keeping that split feeder, or getting rid of that split feeder situation, that's, I guess, all part of how we kept coming back to this alternative.
And I appreciate your, that was a great explanation. Thank you. And I appreciate your reference to the additional cost impact of having to expand Swope to be able to accommodate the movement of sixth graders, which is a priority of the district, and then be able to have that small pocket of people continue to go to Swope when Pine is right there. And Pine can accommodate them and needs to be able to balance that out. So that was, that was well said, and I had not, I had not thought about the cost impacts as a, as a component of this, but it's a really important point to make. Okay, are there any other questions right at this moment? If not, let's, can we take 10, and no more than 10 minutes, and we'll come find you at 10 minutes? But I think everybody needs to just stretch before we make these very important decisions, so we'll take a, just a 10-minute break and be back. Let's call the meeting back to order, and I do mean order. Let's, so we did vote on 304. So we have votes to do on agenda items 305, 306, 307, 308, and 309. I would like to take them one at a time. And again, you've had the opportunity to hear how all of these interact, as we described it, the tentacles that go from one of those items into another. So I'm glad we had the opportunity to ask questions about all of them while we were going through. So let's start with 3.04, which is, oh no, we did do that one, sorry, 3.05, which is the attendance zone boundary for Marcy Hurst Middle School, modify the attendance zone boundaries of Kendall DePole Middle School and Edward L. Pine Middle School, moving students who attend Ted Hunzberger Elementary School, Elizabeth Lenz Elementary School, Pleasant Valley Elementary School, and a portion of students who attend Brown Elementary School to Marcy Hurst Middle School effective for the 2020-21 school year. Does anyone have a motion to make on that? Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make the motion, just wanted to give a couple of thoughts, and I could say these thoughts for all of the agenda items, but we're on 3.05, so it applies to this one as well. What's really helped me throughout this entire process was just the amount of thought and just a comprehensive look that the zoning advisory committee has done with staff, working together. What they've done, looking at every neighborhood and the impact that every neighborhood could potentially face is, as they looked at rezoning. And I really like, I keep coming back to those guiding principles, you know, to me, those guiding principles, I thought really captured what I felt was important, but what, what the community, I think, generally feels is important. I mean, everyone that I've talked to, from parents to principals to grandparents to everyone in between, they've all said things that kind of hit around those guiding principles. And having attended one zoning advisory committee, just to sit in and listen to it, and looking at the recommendations, it makes me feel more comfortable making some of these tough decisions, knowing that the committee had that lens, that they had this lens of these guiding principles. So whether it was looking at a small little neighborhood and where to move it or not move it, or whether they were looking at countywide kind of things, changes, and knowing that in the back of their mind, they applied those guiding principles to, really helped me out, really made my comfort level a little bit higher, because these are tough decisions. And I think that, you know, we face ourselves, the reason that we're in this position now where we have to consider rezoning for so much of the county all at once, is because in the past, we, the school district had seen a lot of student growth, but not the money to build schools. And so past zoning committees and past school boards had had to, you know, make little tweaks and little adjustments because that's all that they had. That's the resources that they were given. But now that we have WC1 in place and we have the money to now start building these schools and expanding existing schools, that it's like a perfect alignment. Now's the time to really look at something major. I do think that there will be some, some short-term pain. You know, some neighborhoods are going to experience a little bit more, you know, pain or uncertainty than others. Even just certain parents that have students in multiple schools are going to experience a little bit more pain and uncertainty than others. But I think that the long-term benefit to doing this is going to be much more beneficial for the county, much more beneficial for the school district, and just ultimately better for the students. And that's really what it all comes down to. It's what's best for students. So I mean, that's kind of my two cents. And so I'm happy to make a motion for 3.05. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the zoning advisory committee to establish new attendance zone boundaries for Marcy Hurst Middle School, moving students attending Ted Hunzberger Elementary School, Elizabeth Lenz Elementary School, Pleasant Valley Elementary School, and a portion of students who attend Brown Elementary School to the Marcy Hurst Middle School attendance zone boundary effective for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Minneto. And just for clarification, that is Alternative E is the recommendation from the committee. Discussion on that, under discussion, I think we recognize that the decisions by the NIAA will be very important throughout this process for us. And I hope that we can use whatever influence we have to make sure that none of our students are adversely affected by these decisions as it relates to athletics. Are there any other items for discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Opposed, Trustee Calvert. Okay, thank you. Let's go on to 3.06. And that is consideration of approval of the recommendation from the zoning advisory committee to modify the attendance zone boundaries for Kendall DePole Middle School, Edward L. Pine Middle School, Darrell C. Swope Middle School, and E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, moving students who attend Dodson Elementary School, Donner Springs Elementary School, Hidden Valley Elementary School, and Huffaker Elementary School to Edward L. Pine Middle School effective for the 2020-21 school year. Do we have a motion on that? Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm happy to make this motion, especially since this, this is mostly in my district. And again, just, I felt the committee did a great job looking at all the issues and studying this, these issues, and getting feedback from a lot of people for many, many months. So with that being said, I recommend that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendations of the zoning advisory committee to establish a new zoning boundary for Edward L. Pine Middle School, moving a portion of students who attend Collin Ranch Elementary School to Huffaker Elementary School, moving a portion of students who attend Hidden Valley Elementary School to Roger Corbett Elementary School, moving students attending Edward S. Dodson Elementary School, Donner Springs Elementary School, Hidden Valley Elementary Donner Springs Elementary School, Hidden Valley Elementary School, and Huffaker Elementary School to Edward L. Pine Middle School, effective for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice President Raymond, and just again, to clarify, that was alternative F from the, F as in Frank, from the zoning advisory committee. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay. Next, we will go on to item 3.07, consideration of approval of the recommendations from the zoning advisory committee to modify the attendance zone boundaries for Collin Ranch Elementary School, Roger Corbett Elementary School, Edwin S. Dodson Elementary School, Echo Loader Elementary School, Hidden Valley Elementary School, Huffaker Elementary, Smith Ridge Elementary, Edward L. Pine Middle School, and E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, moving a portion of students who attend Collin Ranch Elementary School to Huffaker Elementary School, portion of students who attend Roger Corbett Elementary School to Smith Ridge Elementary School, portion of students who attend Edwin S. Dodson Elementary School to Roger Corbett Elementary School, portion of students who attend Hidden Valley Elementary School to Roger Corbett Elementary School, portion of students who attend Smith Ridge Elementary School to Edwin S. Dodson Elementary School, a portion of students who attend Smith Ridge Elementary School to Echo Loader Elementary School, and a portion of students who attend Edward L. Pine Middle School to E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, effective for the 2020-21 school year. Do we have a motion? Vice President Raymond?
I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the zoning advisory committee to establish new zoning boundaries for several elementary and middle schools, moving a portion of students who attend Roger Corbett Elementary School to Smith Ridge Elementary School, moving a portion of Corbett elemen, sorry, moving a portion of students who attend Edwin S. Dodson Elementary School to Roger Corbett Elementary School, moving a portion of students who attend Smith Ridge Elementary School to Edwin S. Dodson Elementary School, moving a portion of students who attend Smith Ridge Elementary School to Echo Loader Elementary School, and moving a portion of students who attend Edward L. Pine Middle School to E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, effective for the 2021 school year.
Do we have a second on that? Second by Dr. Taylor. Do we have any other discussion? And again, just reiterating that this looks like a very complex, and it is, a very complex set of recommendations, but as has been mentioned and reiterated by the Chair of our zoning advisory committee, whom we are extremely grateful to, there's a lot of geographic logic, which again, has been a guiding principle that Trustee Kelly mentioned at the beginning of this. So we have a motion, then a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we will go on now to item 3.08, which is consideration of approval of the recommendation from the zoning advisory committee to modify the attendance zone boundaries for Libby Booth Elementary School, Mount Rose K-8 School, Veterans Memorial Elementary School, Archie Clayton Middle School, Fred Traynor Middle School, and E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, moving a portion of students who attend Mount Rose K-8 School to Libby Booth Elementary School, portion of students who attend Mount Rose K-8 School to Veterans Memorial Elementary School, and a portion of students from Archie Clayton Middle School, and a portion of students from Fred Traynor Middle School to E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, effective for the 2020-21 school year. Do we have a motion? Vice President Raymond?
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendations of the zoning advisory committee to establish new attendance zone boundaries for several elementary and middle schools as follows, moving a portion of students from Mount Rose K-8 School to Libby Booth Elementary School, moving a portion of students who attend Mount Rose K-8 School to Veterans Memorial Elementary School, and moving a portion of students who attend Archie Clayton Middle School, and a portion of students who attend Fred Traynor Middle School to E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, effective for the 2021 school year.
Is there a second? Second by Trustee Calvert. Is there other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And then on to our final item for the zoning items tonight, consideration of approval of the recommendations from the zoning advisory committee to modify the attendance zone boundaries for Archie Clayton Middle School and Darrell C. Swope Middle School, moving all students who attend Hunter Lake Elementary School to Darrell C. Swope Middle School, effective for the 2020-21 school year. Is there a motion? Okay, motion by Trustee Calvert, and a second by Dr. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Well, again, our incredible thanks for the most amazing thorough job by the zoning advisory committee. We know you're out there, we hope you're still listening and not eating dinner and drinking wine and all those other things, but we, again, our gratitude is just immense, and you have spent so many hours, you have given so much of your time to make a better community and make a better district. And we know, we understand that these are very, very passionate decisions, and they affect people's lives, they affect people deeply. We understand and appreciate that there will be big changes, and we know that many families will be affected by these decisions for years to come, and we know that you understood that in taking this challenge forward. So thank you to you, Ms. Smith, and thank you to all of your fellow committee members, thank you to the staff that has worked so hard on this, and I know your work is not done. There will be much more to come, and of course, the zoning advisory committee as well. So thank you. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to thank the, thank the committee, I mean, the community that were involved in all the meetings that you had, and sent in and shared, and you said those comments made an impact on some of your decisions, and they help us move forward as we look at, as we consider the moves for high school, if this is going to happen, and this needs to happen. All of those things, I think, that are important. So for those of you who, well, I guess it's only you who hung in there and stayed this whole time. I can say that to Candace, I've known her for a long time, but for the others that were involved and engaged and stayed a part of the process, we're, this is a better action, and we had better recommendations from the committee because you were so involved and hung in there, so that's really important, thank you.
Okay, any other trustees wish to make any comments on this? Okay, well, job well done, thank you so much. Okay, we have, we have another public comment section, do we have public comments, JJ?
I think they left, but Charlie Melvin?
Not here.
Erin Phillips?
Not here, okay. All right, well, we have completed the rest of our agenda items when we were waiting earlier, so our next meeting is June 4th, which is not typically a, oh, okay, you want to make public comment? Okay.
All right, so for the public comments, I'd like to say, I'm Cecily, Ms. Paul, Lamarcus, and Wendy, and I don't know what's her name, Beth Smith? To say thank you for being hard work. I know difficult for family, and does near world does improve Smith Ridge stay up pine? Yes?
I couldn't tell you right now, Mr. Duran. Mr. Lamarcus can tell you, and Ms. Smith can tell you.
Non Vaughn, not go reason to Vaughn? No? Okay. Okay, I guess, I guess we have to discuss on high school zoning, whether Smith Ridge go wish or not, because you want to be long school, totally get it, that affect people life. And I know near world area, what being, I heard this lady said, like, being closer to wisdom doesn't make law sense, but for social situation, it does not make sense because you being like, Mr. Being long school, like, from pine to wisdom, and then being just a web. And I'm going to have to say like, a board member, but Board trustee will find different option, and I'm here to look forward to work on the September, October for zoning committee and NIAA, and I was a huge part of a Galena Law Squad fans when I was a high school student, and, you know, Law Squad.
Okay, well, we'll see you at the high school zoning. Okay, in the fall. Thank you, Mr. Duran. Okay, that concludes our meeting, we are adjourned.